Buddy, and welcome to the Regular Workshop Tuesday, February 23rd. We're glad to see all the tennis players in the room. I'm sorry, that was a joke.[229.25][229.25](Laughter). Pickleball players, we got it, we got it. We do want a demonstration, so y'all get the nets and the paddles out. We will set up right here in the middle and see a demonstration.[240.56][240.56](Laughter). Would you all rise, please? We're gonna have Commissioner Pickens do the invocation and Commissioner Turner do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this glorious day and all the blessings in it, Father God. We just thank you for the opportunity to gather here as concerned citizens and staff and our fellow commissioners, Father God. Just let us listen to the comments and go about our business and deliberate it and discuss it, Father God, and make the best decisions for the citizens of Putnam County. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Do you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done.
That sounded good. Y'all can come back every meeting, we'd like to have it.
Yeah, right?
They probably will.[294.14][294.14](Laughter).
All right. On our agenda, we're gonna have public comment on agenda items, but that's not what you're here for. We do the pickleball in the Port Authority meeting, so just give me a moment on that, okay? So is there any public comment on agenda items that are not Port Authority related? And I don't think, see so. And if we miss it, we'll come back, don't worry. Okay, so we don't, we don't have any public comment on, on agenda items, we're gonna go right to... No, we're not, we got two minutes. So we gotta wait two minutes, 'cause we have a 2:05 Special Port Authority workshop. So we will recess for two minutes.[338.19][338.19](Laughter). Jacob, you got us? We're gonna call our Special Port Authority workshop to order, and public comments on any Port Authority workshop items. Now pickleball, when we get to that, we can address it at that point, okay? So is there any other public comments concerning our Port Authority? And seeing them, we'll move to item B. Kevin Stevens, would you please come up and talk to us about the pickleball court funding?
Mr. Chairman, before Kevin starts, and I appreciate Kevin, Ms. Jimmy Simon has reached out to Kevin a few months ago about pickleball, and Kevin suggested that they come to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee meeting, which they did, not in this force, probably because we couldn't fit them in the room, but they did have four or five representatives, and Ms. Simon gave a really good report overview about pickleball and then how it's growing in, in the country and in the state and even in Putnam County. So they came, they, we asked them to go back and get some numbers, which you'll see in here, and Kevin will go over, and they came back to another meeting, so we discussed this. So we felt as a committee to move this forward to the Port Authority to get some guidance from the commission, because it is a Port Authority-owned property where we might, you know, maybe put some pickleball courts. So Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens.
The packet that you have in front of you has the, the information that Ms. Simons had presented to us, and again, as Commissioner Pickens said, she did collect the majority of all this information and pass that to us at the Recreation Advisory Board Workshop or meeting that we did. So if you wanna go through the packet, you'll see the, the budgetary estimates that we're looking at. The, the top portion of the page is for new construction, to start from scratch and build the pickleball courts themselves. The middle portion of the page, which is the resurfacing, that's to resurface some of the current courts that we have. We do have a couple of other courts, for example, out in San Mateo, but I believe this was primarily focused on resurfacing the courts at Triangle Park itself. And then you'll see some of the items for consideration at the bottom, that some of the people did include, some of the contractors, vendors did include, and some did not, but fencing, lighting, restrooms, wind screens. So after some discussion with Ms. Simons and at the Recreation Advisory Board, we kinda felt that the best place to put this particular activity would be at the John Theobald Sports Complex. It already has lighting there that we can probably try to piggyback off of with the sports field lighting. We already have restrooms available that are there by the concessions. There's already parking there available, so after doing a little bit of research on it and looking around, we felt that this would be probably the best place to put it at.
Mr. Stevens, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I looked at these cost estimates, and I kinda contacted a few people that I know. Seems like a concrete slab can be built for a little bit less than what these estimates are. They seem to be a little high, and my question to you is, we're gonna need more than one, correct?
Yes, sir. It's, it's one solid slab, 120 feet by 90. It's, and the concrete slab itself isn't the expense. The expense is the layers that they have to put over it for the non-slip surface.
Right.
And I believe that's done in three different phases itself, is letting the concrete cure and then putting the, the sports surface material over the top of that. So the real expense itself is not in the concrete pad, it's in the sports surface material that goes over the concrete slab.
How many courts are gonna fit on that one size pad?
Four.
Four?
Yes, sir.
But we could split the bid up. If we went out to bid, we could do concrete slab, and then we could do a coating on top of that concrete, correct?
Yes, sir. You can do a bid in a manner that would allow the vendor to bid all at once or à la carte, essentially, and so then the board would have the authority to take the award that's most advantageous to the county.
Thank you. Commissioner Turner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of procedural questions. Under our current purchasing ordinance, are we gonna have to take this out and bid on our own, so these are just ballpark numbers at this point in time?
That's correct. These are what we would consider a budgetary estimate, and then if the board is gonna allocate dollars, then we would put a formal solicitation on the street.
Okay, so we would take this and move it forward to the proper procedural movements, okay? Kevin, if you, do we have, I noticed where you're gonna put it, what if, what if this takes off even more than what it is right now, and we wanted to build additional courts? If we're gonna use the pot of money that we're talking about using today, which is Port Authority dollars, you can't go out in San Mateo, that's not owned by the port. So that would have to come out of a different pot of money. So if we decided to, is there enough room out there, close to or in the vicinity of the proposed location to build four more or two more or whatever, in case this got to be a really big venue?
Yes, sir. If you, if you look at the map there that I've attached to it, if you keep going up north, and then across the street, we have our maintenance shed and items over there. There is room over there to construct another 120-foot by 90-foot court system, but again, we run into the problem of no restrooms unless they come all the way back across the street, no lighting, because there's no lights built up, and then probably one of the bigger drawbacks of putting it over there would be the encroachment of the parking when we have soccer season, because that's where one of our main soccer fields is, and, and that entire area gets used up. So we don't really have a whole lot of room for expansion at the John Theobald Sports Complex itself.
Unless you put it back behind the baseball field in that area or something?
Yes, sir. You know, you might, could, could sneak one or two in if you adjusted the, the size of the sports fields themselves and brought those in 100 feet or so. There may be room at the far western end where the triangle comes up to, where we just have the trees at. There may be room in there, but again, you'd kinda run into the same problem as far as parking, you'd run into lighting, restrooms, and that sort of stuff.
I think that's what, part of what makes this location desirable, is a lot of that's already located there.
Yes, sir.
And the parking's already in place for other kinds of tournaments. Unless there was one on the same day, there should be plenty of room for...
Yes, sir, absolutely.
...people coming and parked. Could you, and this, you may not know the answer to this, but could you, if you had a real big tournament for one of the pickleball tournaments, could you adapt the current tennis courts to where they would work for pickleball during this, a big event, if we built these other four, four for now?
Yes, sir. They, they, they currently use, at the tennis courts that are there, they currently use portable nets, and so they could still use the portable nets if they had a tournament of that size to go along with the permanent pickleball courts that would have down there.
Or special event or something?
Yes, sir. I believe I'd give them approximately eight courts.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I think I'm yield the floor for the moment.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens, before I move on to Commissioner Rawls and Commissioner Adams, would it be possible just to take the tennis courts that we have now, make them pickleball courts, and build one tennis court? And we could have more than, how many tennis courts we got out there, two or three?
There's two current tennis courts. One of those has already been converted into a basketball court.
Okay, so could we build a basketball court and a tennis court, and just make those where they're currently playing now, just straight pickleball? That would get eight courts, right?
Yes, sir. Well, it would, if you look at the, the diagram that you have there, you would be able to convert those two tennis courts that are currently there into four pickleball courts, not wanting to take the place of the basketball court. If you go into building a new basketball court and a new tennis court, you're getting almost into the same size that you'd be running into building a pickleball court.
Yeah, but you're just talking about a slab with basketball with pole up on each end. I mean, it's not that big of a... I mean, I, I don't know. I'm just saying, they're, they're custom playing there, they've already got it. Instead of moving them across the road, I wouldn't be in favor of that. I'd be in favor of trying to stay in that location.
Yes, sir, and, and that's why we wanted to put it exactly where we, we have it planned at right now, because they're gonna use the same parking lot right there, and then they have the same restrooms. They have, probably one of the bigger advantages is we already have sports field lighting. We always have to take into consideration all of the underground items that are there with our irrigation systems, the sports field lighting that's already there, the plumbing and everything that already runs through the link area, and so that's also a consideration we look at.
Thank you. Mr. Rawls?
Ask them how much they use the existing tennis court.
Yeah, I mean, the question is, how much do you use the existing tennis courts now?
It is, it is used. It is used on almost a daily basis, but not, not nearly to the point that, that pickleball uses it. But every afternoon, there is one or two groups or one or two families that do go out there and use it. The basketball court gets a lot of use, so I would certainly not want to, to touch yet, unless we gave them another opportunity. But we do have tennis players that are out there.
Mr. Rawls?
So I see Doug Thompson in the audience, so I was wondering if it'd be okay for me to ask him to come up and...
Can we go ahead and ask your question now, and then, because Mr. Adams is on deck?
I'll yield to Paul for it now, though.
Mr. Adams, eh?
I guess my question is, is what's the, if we built a new one, what's the life expectancy of the surface? Like, what's the maintenance and life expectancy, since we don't have one today, you know, 'cause there's gonna be cracks, there's gonna be other things that happen? What's the ongoing cost after it's built?
Once the, once the brand-new court is constructed and the sports surface is laid down, typically about 10 years.
Okay. And then, I'd be surprised myself that I'm saying this, but because we have the, the limited space, kinda like Mr. Turner was referring to, you know, would it be advantageous, I don't know if it costs a lot more if you build four courts and you come back and add two to it, would it be advantageous for us to see what the cost is to build six courts there? That looks like it would fit there, and that we were kinda killing two birds with one stone as far as expansion in the future, then I only happened to be in the meeting where they originally came and they asked for 16 courts.
Asked for what?
16 was the original ask, so they pared it down to four. So six seems like it may be, I don't know if it would be cost prohibitive to add two more later and kinda try to cornhole them into the edges of the courts that we build now, or to get a, at least a quote to do four and six as part of the process, so we can compare the two quotes.
I, I went out there and I double-checked my measurements again today with some staff, and it, unless we move the, as you can see on the diagram, the, the outfield fence there that runs along the first baseline, unless we move that fence in some, we're only going to be able to fit those four right there.
Okay.
It is that tight, and even then, it's moving, you know, encroaching into the parking area almost, so...
Okay, so this drawing isn't exactly to scale?
No, no, sir. No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Turner?
Again, couldn't, couldn't we think about starting with the four, and then if it continues, I'm not saying this is a fad, but I'm saying that it may get better than what it is right now or not, but if it gets better for a little while for their tournaments, they could utilize the tennis courts as their backup and whatever, and if, then we could revisit it in a year to see if we're just needing a better, bigger facility at that time.
Yes, sir, and the possibility is always there. If you're talking about replacing, just for example, the basketball court, that's the one section at the end, it would be a, a much smaller ordeal to just construct a basketball court. The basketball court does not have to have the sports surface, the non-slip surface that a tennis/pickleball court would have to have. So it would be easier in the future, as you're suggesting, to go back and possibly convert one or two of those, slide a tennis court over, and then build a basketball court somewhere else in this vicinity.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rawls?
All right, so, and I've done a lot of thinking about this, and the reason I wanted to get Doug to come and talk is because there's a place in, over, I think it's in Ormond Beach, called Pictona. Is that right, Doug? Yeah, so it's a, a huge pickleball complex, and there's a lot of money in pickleball. People travel around to play pickleball. I think there's an opportunity here for us to take a look at the possibility of maybe utilizing some of the business park property that abuts the Francis U. Sports Complex, and instead of putting the money in here and then outgrowing immediately, build something out there that has a lot of room for expansion. So if we were to do six or eight courts now, and then they have a need for another eight courts, make the, you know, make the land available, but because the, the tournaments that they're talking about, and our Rotary Group puts one on, I think you got 240-plus people, plus or minus people, that are becoming into Putnam County for this pickleball tournament. You know, it's, it's, it's not a little deal, and folks are coming in from multiple counties to play here for this one tournament. So I, I think because of the fact that we're centrally located for so many counties, if somebody's willing to drive from Ocala to go to Daytona to play pickleball, stopping off in Putnam County would, would be mindless, and so I think maybe, might be good for us to have a conversation about that, utilizing the part, not, not the Francis U. Sports Complex, but the property that's adjacent to it that we currently own.
That's our business park.
Correct.
Yeah, west side of it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so you, you know, if you, if you picture going in Francis, you've got that big parking lot, then you've got the dirt road that goes around the side. We're already talking about having the bike path go through there one day, but if we go off to the east side of that, utilizing that, that same parking area, I, I think that would be a pretty big opportunity for us to be able to build something that's pickleball only in that area, not encroach on all the other stuff that you have here, and do something a little more meaningful.
Well, I just think that we got three tennis courts there, that we use one for a basketball court, and, and honestly, if we're not playing that much tennis, and we are playing that much basketball, build a new basketball court, call it quits, have those three pickleball courts right there. That's my thought, but Mr. Turner?
I don't disagree with anything being said here, but I think that if we move to another location where the facilities weren't already there, such as the underground utilities and the, the light, such as lighting and what have you, and also the bathrooms could be utilized where they are right now, then we're turning this from a, and I'm just picking these numbers out of there, we're turning this from a 70, 80, maybe $100,000 deal into a half a million dollar deal, possibly if we move it somewhere else. I, I'm having a hard time getting there to that level. I have no problem whatsoever getting to this level. Build these four things, go ahead and put them through procedures, get the proper quotes, build these things quickly as we can, try not to make it a government project where it takes three and a half years to get the bid, but go ahead and try to get them built as much as we, as fast as we possibly can. Use the tennis courts for backup. If we, if we start figuring out that space is an issue, or they're crowded, or they've outgrown them or whatever, then let's pick another spot, build a basketball court, and maybe even another tennis court, and convert the whole, the whole area in that area into a pickleball complex. That gives us room to grow without spending a lot of money right now, testing the water and see where this is gonna go. So like I said, I have no, no problem whatsoever trying to move this. This commissioner has no problem whatsoever trying to move this forward today as far as getting the quotes and seeing what, what it'd cost to put in these four pickleball courts.
Mr. Pickens?
And I agree also. I, I appreciate the discussion, I really did. I didn't know how, how this was gonna go. And Commissioner Rawls, I, I do commend you. I mean, that is a grand vision, there's no question about that, and we may get to that point, 'cause it sounds like this sport is growing. And, but to, to, for us to get here, they're playing pickleball on two of the tennis courts now, right, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
But one of the issues is, and, and the pickleball group actually purchased and put up a, a building out at Theobold Park to store their nets in, so they're mobile, so every time they have to, they have to put them up and then they have to take them down, and probably doesn't sound like much unless you're doing it. And so with the tennis courts, it probably would be the easiest to say, okay, we're not using the tennis courts. I know Kevin, Kevin's adamant about keeping the tennis courts, he made that clear in the first meeting, and at the beginning, I did not agree with him at all, but after listening to him, we would be taking away, you know, an activity that's been offered out there. And so we have basketball, we have tennis, and then you've got sand volleyball to the right of the tennis courts, and then hopefully we could add pickleball courts. And we did ride around and, and looked at the different facilities of, of where we could convert courts, but it made the most sense to come back and look at Theobold and see if the Port Authority would be willing to donate some money towards this, so, so that's, I just wanna make those comments there, but I agree with everybody's comments here. Kevin, let me ask you a question. I know when we went out there and looked, the gravel parking lot, looking at this to the right, that area to the right of that, that abuts the back of the softball field too, what is that? That's just open space there. Could that be converted to pickleball courts too?
No, sir, that, this is an older Google Earth image. That's actually two more sand volleyball courts that are there in that place now.
Oh, it is?
Yes, sir. We, we have a total of four sand volleyball courts out there now.
Okay, I didn't remember that, okay.
So why would do...
Yeah.
So why couldn't we make the gravel parking lot pickleball courts, and just keep them stacked up right beside each other?
You could, Commissioner, but then you would run into the parking, you don't have the, the parking...
Parking down there.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm just saying, it's a whole asphalt parking lot down there, but then you have them just stacked up, and for future growth, like we've heard about today, you can just keep going until you run out of gravel parking lot there, you know?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Adams, eh?
That's the question I have, is we, how many of the portable nets do we have now?
Six or eight.
At that location?
In our county?
No, just at that location.
Oh, we have courts, we have six courts already marked on that flat surface.
And that's how many portable nets we have?
No, we have 100 courts and nets. If you're not, you have to...
Oh, okay. So I guess, I guess my question is...
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Hearing me, that's... My question would be is, so it sounds like we have plenty of nets, so I was just wondering if there was the opportunity then to move the nets to a shed or something at other locations that don't necessarily have pickleball. I just think of areas like the Johnson Community Center Park or Melrose, 'cause we do have that basketball thing, maybe they could use that sometimes for pickleball as well. I think you'd get two courts there. Just the opportunity to be able to have more places, locations, to use the portables once they have permanent there, but it sounds like we have plenty of portables anyhow, so we could already be doing that.
Yes, sir, they do.
She kinda answered my question, but thank you.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Stevens? If not, I'll open up public audience. I have three blue cards. I'm just gonna ask you, we all know you're here for pickleball. If you, if you don't have to repeat the same thing your neighbor in front of you said, we'd greatly appreciate it. I think you see that the board is really leaning towards building new pickleball courts, so don't stand up here and beat us up that we need more. You already know that's coming, it's just a matter of...[1751.63][1751.63](Laughter). I mean, Russ will tell you, when you're selling the product and it's already been sold, quit selling, be done with it.
He hasn't learned that.
Okay, so Kurt Crabtree is our first speaker on a blue card. Mr. Crabtree? Yeah, we are going to ask for your name and address for the record, and we're gonna keep you at three-minute time. If you're gonna go over... Okay. Kurt Crabtree is our first speaker on a blue card. Mr. Crabtree? Yeah, we are going to ask for your name and address for the record, and we're gonna keep you at a three-minute time. If you're gonna go over, we're not gonna open the trapdoor and you'll fall through. It's not gonna happen. But we would ask you to wrap it up after, you know, close to that time.
Absolutely. My name is Kurt Crabtree. I live at 96 Bridle Drive, Interlochen. I'm a lifelong resident of Putnam County, and was raised, raised here in this county.
Not you, Mr. Crabtree, he's, we're trying to get.
I can't hear you.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
If you can bring it up closer to you.
Okay. How about now? Okay. Yeah, I would just, I've been playing pickleball for a little over a year now. And I would just like, I've been listening to the comments that have been made here, and so I will direct my comments specifically to some of the discussion that has been made here. I understand that you guys are on board with the idea of a pickleball court and trying to go about it in the best and most efficient way possible. I would like to offer some suggestions, if I might. With regard to Theobald Park out there, those courts, I know there's been folks that have made different measurements and whatnot. And I know that, I would just like to put forth a, my observations of what could be done. And I know that we're wanting to do it in the, in the most least-cost and efficient way that we can do it, and maximize what we're doing while addressing a Phase 1, Phase 2 program, as Commissioner Turner has suggested. What happens if pickleball expands, and what can we do, et cetera? Those existing courts, we could take, and you could, two of the three tennis courts could, we could have six pickleball courts there, while still allowing the basketball folks to have their, be able to play basketball, and those, and that court over, and it'd be one tennis court, so we could still address the immediate need of those folks being able to still play tennis. And at some, and now that third tennis court is already marked out for pickleball as well. So we would be able to have six dedicated pickleball courts with two additional courts on a portable basis, with portable nets, so we could still have eight courts, provided they were not in use for basketball and/or tennis at the time. That being a Phase 1 program, we would be looking at permanent nets and resurfacing to accomplish that goal. And that would be something that we could, you know, do immediately. With regard to an expansion program, I would like to offer, put forward this. There was mention of the, there were four sand volleyball courts there. Two of the four courts are adjacent to the existing tennis courts. There is space available there to duplicate what's already there. So you could theoretically have 16 pickleball courts in that space. That could be under a Phase 2 program, and that's right there with the existing infrastructure that's in place. So you could have, if the expansion, I mean, as, as you mentioned, that there would be, if the demand continues to increase, which in all likelihood, it looks like it's going to, and pickleball is here to stay, it appeals to the massive amount of people from eight years old to 80 years old. And those are the kind of folks that are playing in the tournaments.
And people that play ba-, uh, volleyball may not agree with you, Kurt.
Well, there's still, there's still two volleyball courts that are there.
Yeah.
And when you look at, one thing that I would like to, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Kind of went over your time.
Sorry.
That's okay, Mr. Adamsack has a question for you.
Yeah, so kind, I don't really have a question, I have a statement kind of along with what you're saying. If adding resources takes away from another resource, you lose this commissioner. So I'll just tell you that now. So if we're saying we're gonna take away volleyball, or tennis, or anything like that, to do pickleball, that's, that's a non-starter for me. So I'm just putting that out there, so.
I, I was not suggesting that, sir. I was saying that we would leave one of those courts for, for the tennis courts.
Yeah, but if you look at, the basketball court doesn't have a permanent net for tennis, so that, that's on purpose, so it's used for basketball only. So it really doesn't serve the purpose that you're saying. But again, taking away from other resources to do this, I'd be all for the standalone. So let's not get too far taking away courts and things like that.
You're fine. Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Yeah, the only comment I'd like to make, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, if it ever gets to the point where we do need to expand, and it's the proper thing to do, we can pick another spot on the property and move, where we don't lose, you know, lose another sport, because I'm on board with you. We don't need to take away tennis in order to do this, because the tennis players find out, there'll be as many of them in here as there are today wanting us to build these courts. So we need to figure out a way to do what we need to do here, as well as, you know, as well as continue to accommodate the people that we're accommodating now.
Those that I see playing basketball, they play half-court basketball, they don't play full court. And so if there was a net that was in the middle, they could actually have two basketball courts playing half-court, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tony Marvin? You have to come to the microphone, so. Gotta be public record.
Name, social security, number.
My name's Tony Marvin. I'm a multi-generational Palatka in Putnam County, and a pickleball player. What I've heard here sounds pretty positive. I don't want to take up any more of your time, I just want to put in a plug. The permanent aspect of it is very attractive to me. You know, we've all, back here, put up nets, and then taken them down. Forty-five minutes later, when it started raining, the nets and the equipment gets wet, and they get rusty, and blah, blah, blahs. But it sounds to me like we're on the right wavelength. I'm good, I live in San Mateo, and I'd really love to have something out there, but that's not a priority, I reckon.
God's country.
Do you know the commissioner in that area?
He lives right down the street.
Mr. Turner?
But I'm, I'm all for anything that improves our access to this sport in Putnam County.
Thank you, sir. Eric Levers?
My name's Eric Levers, and I reside at 108 Miller Road, Interlochen. I'm not gonna continue to repeat what's been said, but really, I wrote you guys all letters already, that, and I appreciate the responses from the three of you that sent back. But it sounds like we're moving in a positive direction. It sounds like we just need to work out these details with the park and everything, but I really appreciate you all taking the opportunity to read through my letter and to hear what this group has to say, because it's, I mean, it's pretty beneficial. It, it covers all the age ranges, and, I mean, it's done wonders for me. I mean, I've dropped 80 pounds over the last year from this sport, so. Real thankful for it, and thank you guys for working on this.
Mr. Turner?
Are we done with public comment? Was that your last word?
We're not done. I'm sure there's more people gonna wanna, come on up, state your name and address for the record. Anybody else that wanna speak, just feel free to.
Is anybody else cold?
No, I turned it down.
Just right.
I turned it down.
Bring a jacket next time.
You can give it to Ms. Ashley, she'll take it.
Man, it's cold.
We turned it down, I know. Go ahead.
My name is Jimmy Simons. I live at 244 Port Comfort Drive in East Palatka. I am our representative, our USAPA ambassador for Putnam County. There are many of us all through the United States. I'm the representative here. But our group is the one that does all the work, as you can see, as we are represented today. One of the handouts being distributed shows the figures of players over a 10-week period. It says nine at the top of the sheet, but I added one more sheet since we had a little bit of a delay. Those are people on the courts playing pickleball at various locations in Palatka only. That does not include San Mateo, Flora Home, Wilaka, or Crescent City, or Pomona Park. We've got more players out there than actually what you see on that sheet. But I just wanted to clarify a few things. But first of all, may I, thank you all for coming, wow, I hadn't turned around. Thank you all, pickleball players, for coming. I forgot I had three minutes.
Remember, we have budget talks, everybody has to come back.
They're good, they're wonderful, they're hardworking. If you missed the rec meeting, you didn't hear me say, we have already put $57,000, either dollars or equivalent in value, in pickleball in Putnam County in two years already. So it's not that we beg for money and need assistance, but I think it would, it would be good if we could have some help with these dedicated nets and dedicated courts. Just a few remarks regarding the tournaments and bringing in money. I think, Mr. Rawls, you mentioned this. Tournaments, in 2019, we did have other counties represented in our tournament. First tournament, seven additional states. We had eight states represented in that tournament, and we had over 200 players. In 2021, we have already, and the tournament's not even here, seven states represented in that one as well. And we have 260-something-plus players signed up, even with the conditions of today. The conversion costs, that sheet I just gave you specifies conversion costs. These are from court surfaces out of Clay County. They are a common surfacing company. We got estimates for you from three different companies throughout, they're summer national, summer Florida strictly. But you'll see these costs. I believe Mr. Adamsack or Mr. Turner asked us about the comparative cost, whether we do all four now, do four. We played with five nets today and had people waiting, that's 22 people. We had 32 people playing Sunday. That's with seven, I'm so great at math. Anyway, we had 32 people playing at Palatka High School, we use that on weekends. Anyway, so, and we're growing, we're growing. We probably have a third of our population that isn't playing because of COVID right now. So I wanted to give you those numbers. You can see the comparison, it ranges from $22,200 to $23,880. That's very little to convert from four to six to eight, if you're doing the conversion. As far as building at one time, you know, Mr. Turner, that price is reduced if you do it all at one time. I'm not asking for a lot of money, I just wanted to give you that information. Let's see if there's anything else before my time runs out. As far as tennis players, y'all, I'm very sympathetic to the tennis players. I am a tennis player, former tennis player for years. And I'll bet if I had them raise their hands, you'll see a lot of them out there. Some still currently play both. Another thing I wanted to mention, other than the tennis players, the basketball players. My heart is there. I'm a former teacher and coach, as well as my husband. We would never want to move those kids, even young adults. When we were measuring the courts, one of the guys came up to me and he said, "Do you work for the county?" I said, "No." He said, "Are you gonna take our court?" I said, "No, our priority is definitely to have you playing basketball where you're doing it. Maybe we can get it resurfaced and nicer for you, it needs it. Or maybe you'll even get a new court." You know, I don't know where this is going, I'm just taking measurements. And they seemed to feel better, and we invited them to play pickleball. And we'd like to invite all of y'all, we'd love to have you. We do range from ages eight to 80. And I have, one of our kids is here today, 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 and I hope you'll get a chance to speak to. It, it's an amazing sport for all ages and all generations. And thank you so much for allowing us to speak today.
Thank you. Don't go nowhere. I think Mr. Adamsack has a question for you.
I just want to thank you, because, you know, we've had some conversations during the, some meetings and elsewhere. Just the idea that you've been presenting the data as far as, and you guys on your site have been promoting the fact that people come from all over the county, other states, other things, that's the sell-on that's important to me. I mean, Eric's story about losing the weight, I hope that once I start playing, once I'm almost recovered from my surgery, that I'll be able to follow in his footsteps, because I need to lose about 100 pounds. But yeah, so I'm really excited about it. And I like the attitude of, let's not displace anyone else. And I think, I think the building the four, in my opinion, seems like a good idea. I just have some questions for staff once we get to that point, but thank you.
You're welcome. And I like that idea, I like the conversion idea, I like the four new. We really just want dedicated courts, so we don't have to haul nets, it really is hard. And, and I like that idea. But I wanted to comment also, any of the other areas, and I hope I don't get in trouble with our group, but, but we mark all over the county. We've marked in Crescent City, we've marked at QI Roberts, we'll, we'll mark anywhere. We may wear out our knees, because we have to paint the lines on our knees, hands and knees, but we'll mark the courts, and we'll set up the courts. We do clinics for any school or any community area that wants them. We've done them in Hiawatha, we've done them at elementary, middle, and high, all the middle and high schools. And we'll be glad to do them anywhere. My whole job is just to grow the sport. And thank you for allowing it.
I have a question, Mr. Turner's gonna be next after me. When I mentioned the gravel parking spot, is that a deal breaker or? Because in my mind, it looks like if we can continue those courts going to the west, through that gravel, then we, we have room for expansion as we grow. And yeah, you might have to walk from the asphalt parking area across over there. But in my mind, and this is what I see, is that one day we build a basketball court down there where the proposed pickleball court goes, but we just keep adding on to where you're playing now and go west. Is that a deal breaker to lose that gravel parking lot, or no?
Not to me, I, I can't really speak for the group. Well, I see lots of head shaking. Not to me, and if, if it would work for Mr. Stevens. He looks at the total program, and we're pretty focused on pickleball right now, as you can see. And the, and the tennis removal, going back to that, I don't want the courts gone, but they don't need a lot of courts right now. Pickleball is overgrowing.
All right, Mr. Turner is first.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Jimmy, I have a District 3 appointment to Parks and Rec Committee. Would you be interested?
Excuse me, I didn't understand the question. I'm sorry, sir.
Yes, I can. She got me on the spot, I'm putting her on the spot. Would you be interested in serving on the Parks and Rec Committee as a member of the committee? I have an appointment available for that committee.
Actually, yes, sir, I would be happy to, and I served on that committee years ago under Mr. John Eubanks.
Yeah.
I wasn't great at it, but I did serve.
Hard for her to turn me down, hard for her to turn me down when I got her on television. Okay, so if you'll turn in an application between now and our next board meeting?
Yes, sir.
I will, I will make that happen for you.
Go online to our BOCC Citizens' Participation, fill out the form.
Contact Sarah if you have any questions whatsoever, and she'll help you out there.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Agree into that while I had you on the spot here on television. Other than that, guys, I'm ready to go. I mean, we could talk about this all afternoon if we want. I think we need to do the program that Kevin brought to us today, do the four courts, do them where they are. We can always do the four courts south. We can always do a, move the basketball court somewhere on the property, if it's ever necessary, and grows to that point, and make that whole corner pickleball, if it turns out. As long as, absolutely, Commissioner Adamsack, as long as we replace the other sports somewhere else there, where everybody's not left out. So this commissioner's ready to go ahead and move this thing forward.
All right, we got three more lights. Mr. Rawls?
So I don't know the details about it. I became aware last week that there might have been somebody looking at potentially purchasing this real estate at some point in time recently, or in the past year. I'm assuming this came, came maybe through Brian Bergen, because it never came to fruition, but they were looking to build a shopping center there. So, you know, part, part of my thought process when I suggested looking at setting up a pickleball complex is having a pickleball, a dedicated pickleball complex. So I got a problem moving this forward. But, you know, with, with the amount of people that we have here, and we haven't had this many people on one subject since the monument was, was looking to be taken down. God, I probably shouldn't have said that.
You had to bring that up.
Yeah, right.
You're gonna be censored, okay?
So, you know, and you, you guys, you guys are the ones driving the bus, we're not. So you're the citizens, this is your county, just do with it what you want. Just tell us what you want. But I would highly encourage you guys to think about maybe looking at doing a, a pickleball sports complex somewhere that could be used for revenue generation. And not just for pickleball, but, you know, people that stay in hotels, and bed and breakfast, that eat out. You know, it is, it is a revenue driver for us if we have those type of events in the community, let alone the health aspects of it, obviously. But I agree with Commissioner Turner. If, you know, y'all want to build four or six of them, I'll do four, six, eight, doesn't matter to me, whatever y'all want. We've got the money, it's sitting there, not being used. Let's get it done.
Mr. Pickens, you're next?
Yeah, I, I agree. But also, they do drive the bus, but when they, when they came and asked the first time, it was 16 courts. And I just swallowed it, and I looked down, I said, I know that's not gonna happen in the immediate future. But I think moving this forward, and that's why I wanted the Park and Rec's chairman to bring this to the, to the board, to, to get their input, and a lot of input, a lot of positive input. I appreciate everybody's suggestion. And I would like, if we do approve this, is to get back with Kevin and our board, and look at this, and see if there's any tweaking that needs to be done, and, and do the best for the citizens. Because I do, with Commissioner Harvey, I believe we can find somebody to pour the concrete a lot cheaper than one of these companies, and then get somebody to surface it. So we'll do the best we can, but I appreciate everybody's input, and I'm ready to move it forward also.
Commissioner Adamsack?
I guess I just want to go with what Commissioner Harvey was saying, just out of curiosity, is, when I watch, I've watched some of the videos of people playing and stuff, I think this is something where, I, I think potentially someone in a wheelchair could play pickleball, and, and things like that. So my only question in regards to moving the parking, would we be violating some ADA thing where we didn't have the parking close enough? Or would we set aside some handicap parking there, in case that future does exist? That's just a question I have, because I think that's something we have to take into account a little bit. But I'm for putting in a location where you have it drawn. But I do like the idea of keeping all of it together, if we could, but it doesn't look like that's probably possible.
Commissioner Rawls?
I used to be an avid tennis player, and I played on every court surface you could imagine, all over the world.
Microphone?
Sorry. I was, I was a tennis player, and I've played on all, all sorts of surfaces. And Kevin has talked about having the surface prepared. You know, at our church, we have a pickle, we have two pickleball courts painted out on rough asphalt that's way beyond its useful life. Is concrete surface not usable? Because you can have different finishes of concrete that would give a non-skid type surface. And is that, is that a possibility to get us through, if there was a possibility of getting more, more surfaces that were concrete and, and paint versus the, that micro surface they put down like we did at the, at the high school? Is that not a possibility?
It, it is a possibility, and I would be glad to research it. I'm not an expert on the quality of the surfaces, you know, such as you say with the tennis. And I would be glad to research that. We, we have concrete courses, courts now in use. We play on rough asphalt as well. We, pickleball is that sport. You can, you can wear any attire. You can be any size, any ability and play, and you can play almost on any surface if your ball bounce true. We, I'm not sure about the cost factor, that it would actually save money and over time that concrete would wear as, as well. I, I really just don't know. There must be a reason why most of them are asphalt.
Well, asphalt's going to be a little, little more easier on the knees. You're not going to have.
It is definitely that.
Right. So that's, that's one aspect. But the, somebody had said, we've got to put concrete down, then we have to service it. And one thing in my mind was, what if you put concrete down and striped it, and then you prove up your theory that, hey, pickleball's a big deal in Putnam County. We need, we do need 16 courts. And then at that point, we could have, start having a larger conversation.
I'm, I'm not opposed to it. Maybe some of our members are. There's many out there that know more than I do as far as surface and playing, but if the ball bounce is true, we could definitely play right here.
All right. Mr. Turner is next, and then we're going to.
Okay. Couple of things, Ms. Chairman. Number one, we can do these mechanical things, the parts of what we're talking about in the purchasing process. Find out what the different options are and ask them to get prices on different ones. The things that I would like to get the board to commit on today, if possible, is that we're going to do the plan if we can get it to come together. If we can get the money to come together, the plan where we're going to put them could come together. By then, Jimmy will be on the board so she can back Kevin up. So anyhow, and I think Mr. Pickens chairs that, that name?
Yes.
You chair Parks and Rec, so okay, so good deal. So anyhow, if we can get all that moving and back and committed, the only thing I would like to do today is ask the board to move this program forward. Let's commit the four if we can get it done with, within procedure.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Turner to move this forward. And what I'm understanding is at least four courts where it's proposed at right now. Okay.
Is there a dollar limit?
And we got a second by Commissioner Rawls. Further discussion, Commissioner Pickens.
I will add to that $100,000 limit at this point.
Okay, so the motion is $100,000 maximum at that proposed location for the pickleball court. That would be the slab and the coating on it?
Yeah, and they, you know, they might need some lights to piggyback off the ball field or some other thing. Let's just give them a budget of 100 grand and see if Ms. Young can't work her magic.
Okay. Mr. Adams, you have the floor.
I basically was going to say the same thing that Mr. Pickens did, but I agree. I mean, with what they gave us, this was a rough estimate, 84, 50 with lights and fence. I just assume have, have lights and fence if we're going to build it. If we're not going to have lights and fence, then, you know, 100 grand thing seems like it covers it well. So thank you.
Mr. Pickens.
Yeah. And also, as we move forward this, I actually stopped and watched them play pickleball in Crescent City Saturday afternoon after I got off work and.
Why didn't you play with them?
Well, one of the first things they do, they want to get the pickleball racket in your hand. And so.
It's a sales technique.
I said, I said, "No," and I didn't even tell them who I was. And one lady goes, "I know you." And she says, I said, "Yes, ma'am. I'm Bill Pickens." So anyway, I just asked them some questions. But there are a lot of things you need to consider. So we really need to consider a lot of things because Crescent City did convert to tennis courts, but they had issues with the length of it because you were running out of room on the end, back to back. They didn't have a net separating them. That would be good because a ball wouldn't come into your court, but you still have the ability to backpedal both ways and run into each other. They also, every one of them said, "We need screens," you know, because this, this is a wiffle ball, you know, so it's very light. So they need wind screens, I guess, Kevin, is what you were talking about. So there's a lot of things to look at that may add to this, and we want to do it right the first time. So bringing it back to the advisory committee and let us do some more research on it, but I appreciate the commitment of the board with $100,000.
Mr. Rawls.
I can assure you that no one is going to work harder or do more research or be more thorough than you folks out there. So the more information you can give the Parks and Recreation Committee, the better off they're going to be. This is your opportunity to save money, take that $100,000 and make as much use of it. You might come up with six courts, but this is where you get to be creative. So I can't encourage you enough to feed, feed, feed the beast as much information as you can give it because, you know, staff has regular jobs too. So, thank you.
Mr. Adams.
Oh, I just stood up. I didn't.
What you don't know up there is we have these buttons, kind of like Jeopardy or something. And yeah, they light up the screen. Okay, we have a proper motion, proper second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose like signs unanimously. The ayes got it. Thank you all very much.
Chairman, I have one last question, please.
You're out of order. He brought up the monument. I did. Mr. Turner has.
A question, question for the attorney.
We like to have a little fun, isn't it?
Do I have to wait until the next board meeting to make my appointment subject to a deal? Or do I have to be, do appointments have to be made in a board meeting?
Board authority doesn't have any, many members.
Well, but I'm, we're fixing to go back into the meeting right here shortly. Can we do appointments in a workshop or is that against the rules? I don't want to wait two weeks.
There's no rule to that. I mean, you can do.
No rule to that? Good. Are we done with the porch yet, sir?
No, sir. We have a few more. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you so much for listening to us. Y'all have been wonderful.
Before they leave, I'd like to.
Thank you for all your help.
Wait, wait.
Just so, anyone out there, District Five, I also have an appointment for Parks and Rec. So seriously, if anyone's interested, the girl that I had that was interested isn't sure if she wants to do it. So if there is anyone interested in District Five, please let me know.
Thank you.
Interlocking West Putnam. There you go.
Okay, we're going to take a two-minute break so we can clear the room and get started. Thank you. We're still in Port Authority. Item C, Julian Young, Business Park, external improvement budgetary quotes.
Yes. Board meeting, the board asked staff to request quotes.
Jacob, will you shut that door, please? Thank you.
At the February 9th board meeting, the board asked staff to request quotes for the landscaping and upkeep at the business park. Again, it's been a short turnaround, so we can still massage this a little bit based on the board's directions. What we sent out was specifications for mowing and general upkeep on an every-two-week basis. That may be a little bit more than what the business park actually needs, especially during the winter months. So there is, there could be some, some options to negotiate. But based on doing it just consistently every two weeks to include the roads, the entrance, the county road 309 entrance, the key building and the retention pond, the lowest responsive person to quote was at $2,650 a month. And then, of course, there were optional items that the board asked to, asked us to explore, which was some landscaping at the entrance off of St. John's as well as pressure washing. And there are some optional or on-demand quotes for that as well. We just need some further direction. Do you guys want to attempt to modify the frequency? Do you want to do it just as is? What, what would, what's the direction staff needs to take?
Okay, Mr. Turner, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You know, I, I appreciate the effort here that was made by the board. I happen not to be here that day, but I appreciate the effort that was made by the board. But this commissioner can't swallow us paying $30,000 to mow the grass out there at the industrial park. I'm sorry. I can't get there. I think that what we need to do is highly request that the prisoners go out there once a month, once every six weeks, and dress the place up as much as we can. They're the ones that are running the little zero-turn mowers, I understand, still. And if that's all the case, and don't we mow it every now and then now? Or we just don't get to it? Or just not being mowed at all?
It hasn't been maintained in a while.
It is not. We, we did an, again, an on-demand or, or special circumstance. We mowed it recently on, at the request of the chamber, bringing in someone to show the area to. And so, but again, we need, we just need direction if, how, what the frequency is and, and which direction.
My direction would be if I had to, and I do get an opinion, it may not be what we do, but my opinion is, is that I think that we need to ask Mr. Traxel, can he fit it in every now and then with his, on a recurring basis as he can with his prisoner? I'm hoping that before long, the prisoner crews will be more frequent than they have in the past year because COVID's winding down a little from what it was. So do you think that's something we could kind of fit in?
As of now, I would not count on the, on the inmate crew. I do have one of our three back. We just got them back last week. And before that, I was out for several months, or almost a month, a little over a month, actually. And then before that, it's been hit and miss.
Would it be possible for us to talk to the sheriff's department? I know that they have an inmate crew from the sheriff's department that works at the landfill, I think. Maybe we could piggyback off of that inmate crew that he sends to the landfill to clean up and out at, you know, Animal Services at the landfill, maybe we could slip them over there to clean up the industrial park area or something. So, which is a different set, but they still have an inmate crew from the Putnam County Jail, I believe. And so maybe we just need to get a little bit, look at it a little different angle or something. But I'm not for spending 30 grand to go out there and mow this, mow the grass in the industrial park.
Because the, keep in mind, then, our inmate crew also does other things, and I'm, I'm granted way behind on the other stuff, plus the trash pickup and everything else that goes on with mowing.
I'm just used to you telling me yes all the time.
Mr. Pickens.
Yeah, I, I agree with it. When I saw that, I said, "Wow, that's a lot of money per month." I don't know that I'd be opposed, and we've got a little bit of time because it's still, well, they want it cleaned up, but we've got winter, so the grass is not growing near as fast as will start in the spring. I wouldn't be opposed if they'll go through it for $2,650 and clean all that up one time. I'm not really opposed to doing something at the entrance if the board feels that that's needed and the chamber, we'll probably have to come and explain why they feel that's needed, I guess. You know, first, first impressions are, are lasting. But the first thing I thought of, don't we have a prisoner crew that can take care of this? I didn't even go as far as to say your crew because, you know, we're going to start mowing in the different districts and, and hopefully we don't get behind like we did last year. But that was, I would say, if we could use a prisoner crew, but you're not sure when availability of them is going to increase.
I would not count on them. No.
Have you had any conversation with the state? I assume we still have to pay them even though they're not out? Okay. Did you have a conversation with whomever it is to see what, what the?
I, I have not. No, I know.
Mr. Chairman, I'll field that.
You'll do that.
I've asked Mr. Traxel to keep me a spreadsheet of, of record of when we're getting, when we're not getting them, so we can have a detailed conversation with them when we have an opportunity to put some numbers in front of them. And we'll do that and see if there's any opportunity to recoup any calls from this year associated with our, our agreements or not, and then have some conversation moving forward.
Yeah, definitely moving forward because I think that we all get complaints. There's no question about the drainage and everything. But the biggest complaint I got about the mowing was nobody picking up the trash before the mowing. And so, yeah, that definitely needs to be addressed because we, we're not going to get them. We probably need to make some other adjustment. Okay, that's all I got. Mr. Rawls?
Yeah, I, I had a little bit of sticker shock. Not, not, I'm not going to say it was totally caught off guard, but I, I thought our intent was to, to get the, the property cleaned up at the entrance, not maintain. I'm, I'm not sure what the key building is. There was an aspect called key building to the scope of work. Is that the, the call center building?
Yes, sir. That was actually the call center.
Why, why would we maintain private property?
Because it's right there. It's not that far from the entrance. If you want to make the business park look good, and that's what, that was what we, we were asked to do, I just included that in that statement of work.
I would, I would imagine we could go to the owners and tell them they need to, they need to keep theirs. I, I think this is, is there any kind of a, an overlay that requires anyone who leases or purchases in there to maintain their property to a cer, a certain level? Does anybody know?
I don't think I.
Or maybe we could find that. If not, I, I think we need to go to the building owner and say, "Hey, we're trying to spruce the place up a little bit," because they have the whole right side as you go in. Once you get to their property, they got that sidewalk. They could be maintaining that. And honestly, that side didn't look that bad. It was mainly the center island that Wayne was talking about, where you have the sign, the palm trees and all that. It may be more cost-effective just to rip everything out, leave the palm trees, put some Florida natives in there, overseed what you have now. And then when the spring comes, a little bit of rain, you'll have some nice green grass and put something like Argentine bahay out there, like I'm fixing to put in my yard. And it doesn't grow very tall. You don't have it. Get out of control. You could mow it 36 times a year. But I, as far as the rest of it, 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 it could be strategic for anybody showing the property, to take them off of St. John's Avenue, and then let them know when they get to that, that juncture where the road to Camarco is. Yeah, what's the name? to that, that juncture where the road to Camarco is, yeah, what's the name of that road? Is that K. Larkin?
I think it is.
Okay, so, you know, that's what I was thinking, is we go from that, that corner right there, because that's really where all the fun is out there. Get that cleaned up, that, that's our show pony, make it look really good, and then the rest of it is, is ready for development land, and, you know, doing some roadside mowing here and there, but I wouldn't get a lot, I wouldn't get too wrapped up in that.
Again, that's whatever you guys want us to do. This is what we had originally put together, and that's why we have a discussion about this, so that we can determine what we want to do.
Is it, this, at one point, I thought it talked about the, the park, it says, the section of the roadway and parking lot, trim all trees and shrubs. That, that's a big parking lot for us to have to maintain on somebody else, someone else's property. Oh, you know, they have the right to do it. Would it be possible?
We don't own that key center, or whatever?
No.
No, no, no. Private, owned by Premier Industries, Premier Properties.
Yeah, we own the road and that, that middle, that island in the middle, and I guess eventually we're going to have to have the conversation that deals with who maintains that going forward. You know, as, as we start to sell real estate, maybe we can set up some sort of association that, that kicks in a little bit of money. When all the land is owned, we shouldn't be maintaining that in perpetuity, I wouldn't think.
Mr. Adams, eh?
Yeah, so I guess my question is for Julianne, that, the optional proposal for beautification, is that something that we could do as a cutout? I mean, because I, I don't have a problem spending $1,000 to, to make it beautiful once, and then $50 a month maintenance, but I'm with Mr. Turner and the rest of them. As far as, you know, we could hire a full-time employee to be out there 40 hours a week for, for, for doing this mowing a few times a year, or 12 times a year, whatever it ends up being. So is that, is that possible, though, to, to actually just do that island, make it beautiful once, and then ongoing maintenance of that, or is that too small of a project for something to come out for?
So the way that quotes were generated is that the entity bid on having the regular maintenance, and then the optionals assuming they had the regular maintenance. That is not to say, we cannot go back and say, what if we only did this particular piece of the puzzle? But then again, ongoing, if we're going to beautify it, ongoing maintenance of that, that area, I think logically has to be considered. So, staff can go back and revise this in any manner the board desires. That's just what we're here today to discuss, what the board desires.
Even when we talked that day, it was about cleaning the sign, making the landscape look good, picking up the garbage, and, you know, trim the palm trees that are there on that island, and, you know, a little bit of that edge, but I don't know that I'm, I don't know that when I was thinking when we voted to move it forward, that I was thinking all that other stuff, so, and maybe I just misunderstood our conversation, but.
I don't think you misunderstood. I think we just, we're seeing everything now, now we can scope it in and bring it down. So I don't think, yeah, I'll, Mr. Turner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, if we want to do a one-time, non-reoccurring thing, where we clean up the, the island that has a sign on it or something like that, that's fine. I absolutely with Commissioner Rawls. We have no business working on private property. So, I think, and I could be misunderstanding, or not, or it may not happen, but I'd be willing to bet you a nickel that if you, somebody contacted Kevin Callahan with Premier Properties and told him to clean up his damn property, that before you knew it, it'd be clean, so clean, you'd think you could go in there and have a picnic on it.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, from what I know of him to date. Yeah, and they've, I understand they rented part of that. I don't know who or what, but I understand they rented part of that building. I just think somebody needs to just contact him and say, look, we're trying to bring up the image of our park, would you please try to bring up the image of your property? And like I said, I'd be surprised if it wasn't immaculate before you could shake a stick. So, if we could do that, maybe get a price for just the island going in, and then ask in Premier to clean their place up, and we'll take it from there if we need to do some more later.
Can we go from the island to K. Larkin? I, I think, what I'm thinking is it might take care of the motocross problem we're having out there if that-
On the center petition, you mean, on the center median?
But, edging both sides and cleaning up the trash and all the stuff in there, but up, up to that juncture where they're-
Well, I'm good with that. Yeah, just, Ms. Julie, if you could just probably get us a price just to do that, instead of all this other stuff included too, and the recurring and all that, or whatever, then we could go in there-
So just entrance to PRC Way.
Yeah.
The right of ways.
All the way up to K. Larkin. That, the entrance, and then to K. Larkin, and everything off, everything off to the right is privately owned, so they can maintain theirs.
Maybe if they could mow it one time between the sidewalk and the road, and just get from the sidewalk over to the road itself, up to K. Larkin, or on the entrance, just that area where it looks nice.
So you want the L. I just want to verify, because my map is little, and you want the whole L.
No, I'm not asking.
He's saying to K. Larkin. So we're talking about two different things, and that's where I'm confused.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll go look.
Julianne, why don't you come up, Julianne?
Julianne?
Why don't you come over here and stand where everybody can see it? Because we don't need to-
What? Oh, my diagram?
And everybody can kind of look at what you're trying to do. Because then everybody, yeah, okay, so.
So this is your entrance, and I will pass it around, I promise.
No, we'll just stand right here, and we'll, we'll look.
Your entrance is here, this is, goes to PRC Way.
That's where I wanted to go to.
K. Larkin is all the way over here.
Stop right there.
I just wanted to go to right there, is what I wanted to do.
Right there, that, right there.
Entrance up to the right of there.
That's it.
That's all you wanted?
Everything to the right is privately owned.
Up to that, up to that first intersection.
I'm the Avana. Okay.
Wait a second.
Because everything to the right is owned by Camarco and Premier Properties.
That's right.
Okay, is this St. John's Avenue?
Everything on the left woods. Everything on the left, yeah.
So we just clean up our entrance to that road, and then-
Yeah, clean up the entrance.
Yeah, clean up right here, and clean up right to there.
It's just stockpile, sir.
That's St., that's St. John's Avenue, from right there to that first intersection.
That's right. But we also got to clean up that, because there's shrubs up there.
But we don't own that.
We, 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 we're the ones that landscaped that out there.
Really?
I don't know.
On St. John's Avenue, we did.
I think we sold that, that we landscaped it before we sold it to-
And this is the, the first drive into the call center, and then up here is K. Larkin.
I don't think we own that.
Mr. Chairman? Okay. We need to make sure, that might be in our right of mind.
Those are some Florida natives out there, Dylan. Don't go too crazy for next year.
There you go, there you go. All the-
But up to that first intersection.
That's right.
Right in there. In between the two roads, in the median, right up to the first intersection, make all that pretty.
Okay, and the board is looking for, to beautify it or to maintain it?
To beautify it at this point.
Yeah.
I think if we overseeded it, which is just go through with, and throw grass seed on top of us here now, and then clean out whatever is dead, and then replant some Florida natives that will just take rain and be-
Something sweet and simple.
Can it, can it?
No, we want you to stand there and hold that up for a while.
It doesn't need to be mowed, it's, the, the grass isn't very high right now, it's just, there's a lot of palm fronds that have been blown off the trees, or in the, they're in the curbs and gutters and stuff like that.
What you're talking about, getting it cleaned up from the point of-
Yeah, just clean it up.
One time and then get it landscaped.
One time, get it cleaned up, in between the roads, get it cleaned up from St. John's Avenue up to the first intersection that turns right, that, right in there, get that cleaned up.
Trim the palm trees.
I want to say, why can't we get the Arc with Key Putnam Beautiful to go in there and do that? We're not talking a lot, we're not talking about equipment.
Do landscaping?
They, they go in there and clean up now. They clean up boat ramps, they do that. Why couldn't they go in there, pull the weeds?
If they're mowing and such, I believe they can do it more, um, late or-
More hand, right, I get that.
I do not know that the Arc clients have been certified to run the machine.
No, they haven't, I'm sure.
And let's see what it costs. This costs a couple of grand, unless it's going to do it one time, non-reoccurring.
We're good.
Don't bother her with it.
Okay, we're all in agreement. Okay, that ends item C. Any other general discussion on Port Authority business? Any other discussion? Okay, we're going to join the, adjourn the Port Authority workshop and go back to the B O C C workshop. Not to keep these poor people waiting in the audience. I'm going to mess up your name, Sashin Weston? Is that right? Okay, please come up and, back to our Board of County Commission meeting.
You're who I've been emailing.
Yes, hi. Nice to meet you. My name is Sashin Weston. I live at 3621 Tropic Street, and I've been a resident of Palatka for four years now. When I purchased my property, I didn't realize that, I guess it's a private road that I live on. The section of Tropic Street is private. I've talked to Mr. Adams Ak, and I've talked to Mr. Rawls, and even Mr. Pickens, and Mr. Troxell as well, trying to figure out how I can get that small section of our road graded. It's about a quarter of Tropic Street that's not being graded currently. The other three quarters is being graded, it's a dirt road, and it's in very poor condition right now. I've emailed pictures as well, and we can't, Mr. Adams Ak and I could not figure out in the public records how it became a private road, and that's just that section. And what I have learned just over the weekend from my neighbor is that, and he's been there for 15 years, he said that the gentleman that used to own my property, Mr. Buckles, apparently had, he has a lot of companies in town, and one of them was taking care of the roads. So he was taking care of it privately, since he built the property back in 1959. And when, I guess, my road, Tropic Street and Tropic Lane run parallel, and then there's a little street, Coral Court, behind, apparently they used to connect, and it used to be one loop of a, of a public road. And somewhere along the line, my neighbor said that Mr. Buckles that owned my property, and Mrs. Price that owns the property, sort of catty-corner to me, on Tropic Lane, Coral Court area, they just decided that they didn't want the through-traffic coming through, and they put up fences and just blocked the road off. So I'm not sure how that came about legally or in, in the records.
Oh, it happened, it's not the fact.
But there's no road there now. Even when we were purchasing the property, when we first came to look at it, GPS tried to take us down that back road, and we ended up, you know, at her yard, and I was confused. And people come down our road, which is a little, about 150, 200-foot section that I'm requesting to get graded, and it's a dead end, and they get confused and turn around a lot, and this happens all day and night long. So, I'm really not sure how it became private in that little section, but I'm just requesting now that we can get it graded on an emergency basis, and then maybe we can figure out later how to get on a permanent schedule or make the road public again? Because my neighbors and I are, they're counting on me, they're all on board to make it a public road, or do what we need to do on our end, and fill out paperwork, or come to the meetings, or whatever we need to do to get it continuously maintained.
All right, Mr. Adams Ak, you had, you must have some information.
Yeah, I don't have a lot more than what she said. I mean, I, I think though, the, where the record's going to show that is further than what's online, you're going to have to go to the courthouse to find that.
Okay, that's where I was confused.
That'll be in the books in the courthouse, I don't know. So that, that's definitely there, but that, online only goes back to 1994 or something, I think, or, that's all that's there for her particular property. So, that's where you would get the further records from 1950s, whenever they established that. There's only four houses back in there, and it's, it's, I think we'd be setting it, unfortunately, a tough precedence if we went in there and just graded it. So the other conversation was under, around an MSBU, so I think what you really need is just help on how to farm an MSBU type thing, or, but is four properties enough to justify an MSBU? I mean, is the cost prohibitive? Or, I guess that's really what, you know, most of our MSBU's have hundreds of properties, and this is four.
Mr. Rawls?
All right, so, Mike Troxell, what would it cost to grade that piece of road? Fill it and grade it, whatever it needs?
About $130 a mile, a grade price.
That's roughly what we're paying an MSBU.
This is 150 feet. So, I, I saw Commissioner Turner, he and I are both shaking our head. We've taken a stand as a commission that we do not want to take in any new roads in our public work system, and like Commissioner Adams Ak alluded to, this is a slippery slope that we don't want to go down at all, because what we do for you, we have to do for everyone else. But what we've never discussed in a public meeting is if the homeowners were to get together and pay us to go out there and make this quote-unquote "emergency repair," there is no, with no understanding that it'll be done on a regular basis, but how much would it cost for them if they wanted it graded four times a year, or six times a year? Maybe, is that, is it possible for us to come up with some sort of, kind of like a quasi-MSPU without having to take all the time to go-
They could just hire somebody, yeah, they could hire a private contractor.
But we're there doing it and stopping 150 feet from the end.
I understand, I understand.
That's what, you know, it's kind of silly having this conversation, and I, I absolutely sympathize with your position, especially if they're using you guys to turn around there at the end. But there, that, that would be the only thing that I could figure out, is that we would have to come up with a, a way, you know, for you guys to pay us to do it. That way, we can tell the rest of the county, y'all are not getting special, anything special, that you're paying your way, and, and we're not adopting your road into the public work system.
Well, that's one thing I've thought about for years, that I don't, I don't want county graders in areas MSBU's, because once they see that county symbol, they have no id, they don't care anything else. So I think it'd be best, the private contractors that are out there. Commissioner Turner, I got you as number two, and I got two threes, so I'll go to Turner and Pickens, and then Adams Ak.
Okay. Number one, I don't think statute allows us to work on private property under any circumstances, whether we get, eh, maybe, but I think it's a slippery slope, and the last-
They have to pay actual costs.
Huh?
They have to pay our actual-
That's what I'm saying.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, they can also pay, pay somebody privately to do the thing too, and then we don't get into a situation where two blocks down, they come up and say, okay, you're doing it two blocks down, how come you're not doing it for me? Well, they're paying, I don't care, you should do it for me for free. You know, I'm not trying to act like I don't sympathize with your situation, but it's not all, it's not the only one in the county. It's not even close to being unique. They're everywhere. I mean, there's roads in the county that are paved roads with a private road in between them, coming from two different directions, that we can't even grade in between two paved roads, because it's private. And so if you want to get somewhere, you have to come all the way around and go through, because the roads become impassable, but it's private, we can't do anything about it. So, I, I just think that's a slope that we need to stay away from, you know? I, I don't want to seem unsympathetic, I really don't, but we, I don't just see, don't see how we can go down that road, I just don't.
But mobilizing a grader to do 150 feet is going to be astronomical compared to-
They wouldn't have to do it every now and then, though.
They're already there, though.
Yeah, we're already there.
Don't we have private contractors in there? Do we have any MSBU's around that area?
I'm trying to picture a word, I don't think we do, but I have nobody.
Where's Tropic?
I don't know where.
Well, you, you do have-
Okay.
No, not an MSBU there.
The closest one.
You'd almost need a tractor in there anyway, I think.
Well, what we have is the one out there at, West River Road, and, um-
In your area?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't think of it.
Once it got, ma, once it got fixed to a certain point, I think, though, you could go in and maintain it with a box lathe or something, with it being private, and it wouldn't cost near what it would cost for them to even hire us to put a road grader in there.
Come here for a minute. I'm going to give you my card. My personal number's on there. If you'll call me, I'll give you two contractors that do work for the county on MSBU roads.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just wanted to add, though, that Mr. Adams Ak-
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, your name is like as harsh as mine. I want to say Adam, Jack.
Say whatever.
Adams Ak, right?
Yes.
Mr. Adams Ak and I had discussed that, my neighbors-
Get back to the microphone, there.
Sorry about that. Mr. Adams Ak and I had discussed that my neighbors and I are, are not wealthy by any means. I'm on fixed income, my neighbors work entry-level jobs, farming jobs, and, you know, we, as far as paying to privately come in, that would be, I don't even know if that would be in the realm. If, if the cost to get it to a livable level was reasonable, we, you know, would definitely, we're willing to pull whatever we have to do it. That's, that's, you know, been discussed already.
Call me, and I'll tell, I'll give you those two numbers.
Okay.
It'll be okay. Okay, Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, I, if we were to do this, and by all means, the hardest thing for a commissioner to say is, we can't help you, we can't do this, but I'd, my phone would be ringing off the hook about when you're going to do mine, that I asked you about two years ago, and I sympathize with it, because I live on a private drive and have to maintain it myself.
Yeah, that's what Mr.-
But I think you'll be surprised if you reach out to some of these people that could repair it for you. It, it may not be as expensive as you think.
My, part of my confusion was also whether it is public or private, that's what we were trying to, to research, because my, when I had my survey done, when I purchased the property, I paid $700 for the survey, and it said that Tropic Street is public, right up to my mail, to my gate. So it said public, and I never knew that it was even a private road, or I wouldn't have even purchased the property, because I wouldn't want to deal with that sort of thing of having to maintain a road. I've never even, you know, encountered that before.
Mike, has, has Anita looked into this? I mean, she's the one to-
That's a different- That's a different, that's a different conversation now.
Well, I mean, that's part of my frustration as well.
Public road to the county.
Right, and that's what I explained here, I said.
You have the ability to drive up and down it. It doesn't necessarily mean that you, that, that it's owned by a public entity.
Right, and that we, that we have not, we have to agree to take it in on the county maintenance. Also, you know, it can be public.
Right.
You know, just, just, just like some of those ones we're talking about with a gate across it. We're not maintaining that, and I wouldn't vote for maintaining that at, at that area. But it is still public, so.
It very well could be a public right-of-way or easement for ingress egress that we do not maintain. But I can have some research done on it.
It's definitely private from what we looked up. I guess, I don't want to skip out a turn, so.
I'm, I'm done.
Go ahead, Mr. Adamsak.
Is there, so, when I was researching this with you, there's other dead ends like yours on other streets, and I think those are private as well. I mean, it may be beneficial to spread the cost to maybe find out from those people in your area if maybe you could make a little bit bigger of an MSBU. Or if you contacted the contractor, like Mr. Harvey's gonna give you, and if they did three or four roads while they're out there, those dead ends, then maybe the cost per person would come down. It's just an idea for you.
I appreciate that. The roads that are around my immediate area, like Tropic Lane and Norwood and all of those, they tend to be, to stay pretty stable. They're not in as bad of a condition as, as ours are. And I think it's because maybe we sloped down, and there's a farm behind us. And the section of Tropic Street that is being maintained, the three-quarters of the road already, has no homes on it. It backs up to a farm, it's almost like a, like a back alleyway. So the money is currently being spent to maintain a road for nothing. And our little section is just, you know, where people actually live and have to commute regularly is not being maintained.
I think it'd be good if Danita looks at that and makes sure that we're 100% right on that. Mr. Rawls?
So, back to my original question. And it, not just in this case. And when I asked Sashin to come out here and speak to us, it was so she could address the whole board and not each of us individually. And we're not allowed to discuss this without being in a public meeting, so.
I understand.
But, you know, why, why would we not want to look into the possibility of being able to offer these services at our cost? When we've got a grader there and he's looking the distance from here to the end of our building out of his window and having to turn his rig around instead of just going forward another 150 feet and knocking the whole thing out, and then billing the, the homeowners on a, on their taxes. So, you know, we, we bill them this year, they pay this year, next year they start the services. So we're, you know, they're paying in advance. I'm just wondering, and, and not just in this case, but other cases where we might have this pop up here and there.
I'm not opposed to having that conversation. I'll say that, but I don't want to use our county vehicles to do the work. If we had a private contractor that we negotiated price with, we could send them out, if it's actual cost, and we send that back out, I'd be fine with that. But I'm not fine with putting the county emblem on the side of a grader or a truck, because that's just gonna, exactly two streets down, I saw them out there, they worked on it 10 years ago, by God, now we own it, and you cannot unscramble the egg.
I understand that part. I, I agree with what you said about the property taxes. Though I think we, as residents, would be willing to have it added into our property taxes and, and. I'm sorry, the MSBU? Oh, okay, I'm not.
Mr. Turner has a floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I agree. I don't think that we, our, our equipment, our resources are really stretched thin at the moment. If we're gonna start competing against private industry to try to go out and do stuff that we're not tasked to do, then I, I don't think that's what we need to be working on. So, to me, I think that, Mr. Chairman is exactly correct. I think that we need to have a list of contractors. We need to give them to them. They can go out and hire them a contractor. If we ever decided to, then we need to hire out the contractors. If we decided that the county had to do it, but I don't see why we can't just give them a list of contractors and skip the county getting in the middle of it at all if we're gonna use private contractors anyhow. That would be my, my suggestion, exactly what you said, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Adamsak?
I mean, I, I think we kind of described it, MSBU. So the, MSBU would come out of your taxes, it wouldn't be something you'd pay.
Okay.
So that, I mean, it's, so, I think once we do the research to just double-check for a last time that it's private, then an MSBU probably sounds like the best option if you think your property's gonna continue to get deteriorated because of the level and all that stuff.
I think it will. It's taken four years to get.
Because I, I drove over there, I mean, I, to get a grader down there, a little dead end, and then get it turned around isn't even a possibility, I don't think. I mean, I, I never drove a grader, but I wouldn't want to take my 60-horsepower tractor down the road and try to turn it around.
And we have.
So I can't imagine getting a grader down there and turning it around, so. And like I said, you know, the other choices, like we do on my road, the, the families on the road, we all chipped in, bought a tractor. You don't have to buy a cheap tractor. I mean, there's tractors out there for $1,200 that do that small of an area that, you know, maybe you get a box scraper and do it. But I think getting her the information on starting an MSBU is probably the best bet, because then it does go to your taxes, and it's kind of a less-in-your-face cost.
Okay.
But the only problem with an MSBU is the county has to own the roads at that point.
Yes.
So, you know, and not everybody's willing to give up. You'd be surprised that people want to live on a private road because they want to live on a private road.
Yeah, my neighbors and I had already discussed that, and we have no trouble or any problems making it public.
They don't until, until you have a meeting where you go, you can't drive your four-wheeler on the road, and they go, what do you mean, I can't drive my four? You can't on a public road, and then that blows it all to pieces, so. Mr. Pickens?
You answered my question, and I, I thought that the municipal service benefit unit, MSBU, you receive a benefit for the service and it's on your taxes. It had to be a county-owned road, correct?
Right.
So I think what Adam, Commissioner Adamsak and Rawls were talking about, the MSBU concept.
Right.
With your neighbors to group together and work out some type of, you know, contract with somebody that repairs roads, and then y'all just do it on a ongoing basis. That would be my suggestion. I think that's what we're talking about.
Just a form of homeowners association.
Exactly.
For the neighborhood.
Or just chip in.
It's a group of people.
Or just chip in.
A hundred bucks, that's all.
You had said something about a right-of-way deed. Is that something we have to do in order to get the MSBU? I'm confused about that.
What we're telling you right now is your.
Can we just hook her up with Danita or something? Let her talk to her.
Mike's gonna, Mr. Troxel's gonna get with Danita. Look at the road first, so just wait, make sure Mr. Troxel has your number.
Yes.
You have my number.
Yes, thank you.
And then we'll go from that. We might, we might see you here shortly in another meeting. Okay?
All right.
Good. Thank you.
And the trash trucks and recycling trucks do get down there in that little section of the road, believe it or not, the big trucks.
They can back down if they have to.
I feel sorry for them, having to go down the road like that, but anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, general services surplus property, Ms. Julianne?
Yes, sir. Good morning. Staff is bringing you a couple of items to review. I'd like to take them separately if the board would so allow me to. The first property is a property that a citizen has asked to purchase. Both Public Works and Park Rec, Parks and Recreation has declined the need either currently or future for the particular property. And if board so chooses, we would include this in the bid that's going out within the next two weeks for the properties to be sold to the citizens.
Age seven of the workshop agenda.
Okay. So the question, the ask is, what do we want to do with this property?
Would you allow us to deem it surplus and for it to be sold back to a citizen?
If nobody has a need for it.
So we.
Yes, Mr. Turner?
We own it.
We own it.
We don't need it, according to anybody we got.
We don't need it.
And we just haven't determined that it was time to sell it with the other group yet. So what you're asking today is give you the okay to put it on the list for the next sale or sell it now, or what are you wanting to do?
I'd like to put it on the list. We have that list being generated or the bid being.
On motion or by consensus?
Whatever the board desires.
By consensus.
Now, let's do a motion.
Okay, I move we surplus this property.
A proper motion by Commissioner Turner?
I'll second him.
Seconded by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those ayes sign, the ayes have it. Julianne?
Thank you, Commissioner. And the next one is a little bit unique. We've had a request of a citizen to donate the property to us. In these circumstances, historically, we've worked with Public Works and Park and Recreation to determine if there's a public need or use of the property. This particular property was not needed by Public Works, nor was it needed by Parks and Recreation. However, during our research, we did find that there's an active codes case outstanding on it since 1999. So I'd like to entertain if the board would allow us to accept the property via donation and then issue it for sale to put it back hopefully into compliance.
I would have no problem with that.
Commissioner Turner?
Would it cost any money for us to do any abatements or anything like that? We would have to abate the property in order before we could sell it, or could we sell it subject to them cleaning it up?
Yes, sir, all of our sales that we issue, we can do either is the answer to your question, but all of our sales are done in a manner that we tell them there are no nor potential codes violations on the property, and they're giving a 90-day window by which to bring the property into compliance before a new codes case begins. So it is no different than any other property that we get via a sheetment. They typically all have an outstanding codes issue.
Right, so basically, if we, by the way, I'm for this. I just want to make sure that we ain't shooting ourselves in the foot here. So if we, if we take it back in and we end up putting it on the list and nobody buys it, then we're gonna have to abate it and just eat the abatement and put it back out for sale again, basically. But that's basically where we are now anyhow, because we could foreclose on it and we'd be in the exact same position, except they're giving us the property. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir. Now, historically, if it doesn't sell, we have not abated the property. We've done another sale. And typically, if they go more than two rounds, they sell no matter what. So we have not had a sale go through with a codes violation on it that we then took action on. We let it go back for sale again.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept this property's donation from the owner.
Have proper motion by Commissioner Turner. Seconded by who?
Me.
Commissioner Adamsak? Any further discussion?
That's the first time.
Commissioner Adamsak, you had your button on, do you want to have further discussion?
Hit it, my ex.
Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those ayes sign, the ayes have it. All right, next item. Public Works purchased 15 lots on Sasso Drive. I am going to relinquish the chair. No, I am, because I don't want to sow any partiality. I'm gonna relinquish.
Oh, you're wanting us to do this.
Do you live across the street from this or something?
I'm gonna relinquish the chair to our vice chairman, Mr. Pickens, to run.
You're not even gonna let me poke at you about it or nothing?
You can't. But Mr. Pickens is running this meeting.
Don't get to poke the chairman now.
At this moment.
Haven't done this in a while. I don't think this has ever happened, but I was gonna say, I believe this is in Chairman Harvey's district about what we're gonna discuss.
I believe this is the front yard.
So, anyway, Mr. Troxel?
Well, this is, it is across the street from, from them, or from Mr. Harvey. And we've been approached about purchasing those parcels of land for about $6,400, which I think is a great, great deal. But the biggest part for, for me is that I'd be able to fix the drainage on that road. If you guys remember, I wasn't here at the time, but we, we actually paved the road, and it was just shortly thereafter, we had to pay another $60,000 or so to repair that road after, I don't know if it was a storm or, or whatever. But there is drainage issue there. And I think that we can, I know we can fix the drainage once we, if we pick up those 15 lots. Now, there are some, some ways we can recoup some money if we sell some of the lumber that's on the end. We can eventually sell some lots on, on the very end if we had to. But for a Public Works perspective, I think this is a good deal for the county in order, in order to do that. So I just wanted to bring that, bring that forward. There's a, we're working now to see what, you know, what all drainage improvements we can make, whether we contract it out or, or do it in-house. I prefer, personally, would rather contract it out, but I don't think it'll be that much money. But it will be required, it'll be essential to keeping that road in, in its current condition.
Okay. All right, we'll go to Commissioner comments or questions. So we'll start with Commissioner Rawls.
I, as soon as I saw where it was, and I, I've been to Commissioner Harvey's house when it was underwater, not the house, but everything else, and, and the ditch was full of water. There's nowhere to convey the, nowhere to convey the water to. So are we gonna dig a retention pond or some sort of a dry feature that would get the water off? Because it's.
We're looking exactly how to do that now, the, once we determine where we want to go. But yeah, there, we need to get the water away from that road.
I, I think, I think we'd be foolish not to do it, to be honest with you.
Okay. That all? Commissioner Adamsak?
There's no structures or anything on any of these? It's just all wide-open lots, like?
And as they are currently, it's, it's very wet in there now. I don't think they'd be able to sell.
Can we name it Lake Harvey?
Directly across there. What's that? I'm sorry.
So can we name it Lake Harvey?
I guess I just wanted to make sure there's nothing we have to remove from there. So it's wide-open property, not.
Correct.
No crazy sheds or anything.
Not till Larry gets hold of it.
Okay. Commissioner Adamsak, you, you done? Commissioner Turner?
How much, once we buy these properties, six grand, right?
Microphone?
Oh. Turn on the air conditioner and I'll turn on my microphone.
Say, Sarah, can you, Sarah, can you adjust the AC?
Did you hear the current chairman asked you would you do it? So the old chairman telling you you couldn't mess with it anymore? You don't have to listen to him right now, you can listen to the current chairman, which said, please turn it down. It's hot enough in here to barbecue smoked meat. Okay, so, anyhow, okay, so, back to task. We, 6,500 and 6, 6,400, and we're going to, how, spend how much money on it in additional that ain't already in your budget?
I don't have anything in my budget now, this year, for it. So it'd be probably $3,000 to $4,000.
Are we gonna spend 6,400, which is very insignificant, to fix this giant problem that's been there for many years? Are we gonna spend that, and then that commits us to spending another 50,000 or 100,000 to fix this? Or is it another small thing that you have to do to make this work before we turn it back over?
No, I would say it's, it's less than three, three grand, three to $4,000. It's, it's not a huge deal, but it is enough that I need to save that road.
So it'll fix a significant problem for a little bit additional money once we buy the property.
Correct.
And then we can possibly sell some of the lots if we don't end up using them all on our list, on our regular surplus sale list, possibly.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept this deal and purchase these lots for $6,400 at the recommendation of Public Works.
I'll say we got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner, proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion? Commissioner Harvard, did you have a comment?
I don't, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of the case saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Will there be a pickleball court on that park?
Probably, down on the end.
Okay, I relinquish the chair back to Chairman Harvey. And thank you for letting me do that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'm glad you didn't not want to get it back.
We are going to have an update. It's, it's not on our agenda. Mr. Troxel, if you'll speak about Barton Bridge real quick for just a second. And then Fort Gates Ferry, you want to brief us on that, too?
Absolutely. Start with, with the Barton Bridge. And for transparency purposes, I wanted to let everybody know that we did, we were approached by Le Ware to work on Saturdays.
By who?
By Le Ware, the contractor.
Oh, oh.
The contractor, to work on Saturdays. Currently, our contract does, says it has to be by, by our approval to work on Saturdays. We are looking into that to see if it's very possible to do that. My, my fear is that it might cost the county some additional dollars for CEI, because I have to have CEI there. But we're working through that. I, I don't want to burden the taxpayers of, of the county with additional costs. But we are working with, with Le Ware, the contractor, to see if there's other options for us out there, so.
CDI had to be there at every moment, every day.
Mr. Rawls has a floor?
I'm sorry.
Got you. Commissioner Turner's going where I was going to go. Do they have to be there when the asphalt's being placed? Because typically, it's when concrete or asphalt's being done, or you're setting pilings. Is there, is something critical they're going to be doing on Saturdays? That's one question. The other question is, do they want to work weekends because they've got behind their schedule? And if so, why should the CEI be our burden if they created it?
Well, the answer to the first question is yes, they have to be there whenever they're working. CEI has to be there. It's, that's an F dot requirement. As far as, is it our burden or not? That's what we're working through, through.
I mean, what's causing the need to work on weekends?
They just requested the, the need. They just requested to work 56 days on the, on the weekend.
I would have no problem if, I mean, if it's something that's going to benefit them, maybe get them ahead of schedule and save them money, maybe they can pay for the CEI as well. I don't know.
And that's what we're in discussions with. Yes.
That's what he's talking about.
Yes. But that's exactly what we're in discussions with.
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, I think Commissioner Har, Commissioner Rawls completely covered what I was going to say. You know, if they can work out a deal where they can do it for the same price or cover the price CEI, I don't care if they work Saturdays, Sundays, in all night, 24 hours a day. I don't really care.
Neither will the people of Borden.
You what?
Neither will the people of Borden.
Well, I'm just saying, the faster you can get it done, the better, as long as it doesn't cost us any more money. But, you know, if they're, you know, it may be, except for the overtime involved, because it's the sixth day of the week, it may be that if it shortens the timeframe up by five, six days, there's really not that much difference in between it, you know? So if we had to pay $200, $100 for every Saturday to CSI in addition to the, you know, just in addition to the, because they're taking days off in that are not overtime days. So the only thing you should have to pay your expense is the overtime expense there. And so if that's the case, i- if we can get that bridge open quicker for the residents of, of the, of out there in Borden, or before it collapses, or before it does whatever, I don't even mind putting in just a little bit of money if we had to. But I think CSI should cover that if it's to their advantage to work on Saturday.
Sure, and I'm in agreement. That's why, they had not proven that they can go earlier yet. So that's, that's why we're still in discussion, discussions whether they can finish a little earlier. But we, we are working with them to figure out something if we can do it.
Mr. Rawls?
Did, did you said 56 days? They're wanting to add 56 working days?
Saturday, 56 Saturdays.
That's more than a year. We're done in six months.
Yeah, I think you're number.
But maybe, maybe my numbers wrong, but it, but it is Saturdays. They want, they want to work Saturdays, but.
Okay, I, I just, I don't.
That's 50, that's a year, year and a couple of weeks.
If we have to go out there and explain to them why this will take another year, you will leave the conversation.
No, I think Commissioners, the bottom line here is, in all fairness to Mr. Troxel, he wanted to bring this to you immediately. He didn't hear it on the street, number one. And number two, he's working all the details out now. So he just wanted to bring it to us to let us know. Keep working the details out. You've got a board that's willing to listen to you.
Hey, go build a bridge.
Yeah, build a bridge. That's what we're concerned.
Are we still going to open the end of May, first of June, the first lane?
Should be there. They're driving pilings this, this week, so.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. Now you want to update us on Fort Gates Ferry?
Correct. On Fort Gates Ferry, there's been some, some questions out there about, you know, I think we got a public request or something about, you know, how much we're paying these guys? You know, why are we still paying them? We have a contract with the current folks out there. It's 1,200 bucks a month is what we pay them. And it's, it's, it's good till 2024. Then we can renegotiate that, that contract for the Fort Gates Ferry. The only way we can get out of it is if, if their ferry is not working. So that's, that's kind of the contractual piece on that, that, that part, that part of the, of the contract we have with those guys. Now, as far as the, the design and everything else is going on, we did finally get F dot approval. I had, had to resubmit more stuff to the core engineers for their, for their, for the permit to go, change it from concrete to wood. So I had not heard back from them. Sent that, when did I send that, the 18th or something like that?
Yeah, it's been about a week or so.
So, but that's really the last piece of the puzzle that I know of, that before we can go out for bid.
Is there, is there a chance that they could say, no, you have to go concrete now?
I don't think so. But there, when I talked to the, there's a new, new person working at the core engineer, so I had to resubmit almost everything back to the original. So I submit that, submitted that back to them. So they're supposed to get back with me, but I, I don't think there'll be an issue with it. But I just want everybody to know that when we do go out for bid, if it follows the exact same core engineers that we got approval for, for the concrete peers, it's, there's going to be a requirement in there for a professional engineer to, to be on that team. And that's going to be, it's going to be pricey. It's probably not going to be as cheap as people think. So I'm just, I'm just saying, that's what the core engineers, the current core engineers requirements are for the, for the bridge. Because those are basically bridges.
Okay. Well, if I may. When I spoke with, with FDOT a year and a half ago, they said, this is not a bridge, but because of its length, they, it meets the technical definition. They realize it's not a bridge. I'm trying to wrap my head around how Army Corps has purview, because what was submitted to them in concrete was submitted in error by the county. The county went forward with a project and paid for engineering on a concrete structure, but the wooden one was never removed. And FDOT said, if this is a repair of an existing, then it, then that's how it would be handled. Have we applied to Army Corps as repairing the existing?
Yes. That, that's what, that's, they asked me more questions, and that's what I sent them, was, was the, the new drawings, with stamped drawings from, from the gentleman, and then the new questionnaires.
But this isn't, this isn't a new design. It's not a new landing or repairing the original one in its original place. And I was in the phone with Army Corps October of 19, when they, their only concern was the labeling of the, the, the two landings, because they were saying the north and south, or the east and west. And there was a lot of confusion about which was which, because of where it sits in the river. But my understanding was that the Army Corps was going to go and modify the permit at that point and put it back to what it originally was.
They, they did not.
I know. So now it sounds like you're saying they're, they're going to, they're going to take another look at what FDOT just approved. And my, my question is, is, you know, do they, do they have the proper understanding of what the scope of work is?
Yeah, I sent it all to them. I mean, they, they have it.
But have we had the conversation with them is my question?
I have, no, I have not yet. I just sent it to them.
If, if I'm receiving this information, I'm Army Corps engineer, they're looking, wow, it looks like they're building a new, a new ferry landing.
Well, it was in my modification letter, saying, you know, we're, we're changing it from the concrete that was submitted earlier, that was approved, to, back to just repairing of the wooden dock.
My, my recommendation would be that we get hold of somebody and say, and make it very loud and clear, if we have to highlight it in yellow, that the original intent was to replace it with a new concrete structure. The state would not allow it.
Correct.
Now, we're going to go back and repair the existing in its place.
It would allow it.
No, the state, from my understanding, is the state said, because it was a historic landing, it could not be made out of concrete. It had to be out of wood.
I'll answer that one.
And that's what I heard from DOT, when I spoke to DOT, the lady said it had to be made out of wood because of the historic value, historic significance of the, it's been the second oldest ferry landing in Florida.
I do remember something like that. Okay.
That's, that's all.
All right. Mr. Pickens?
I don't remember that part exactly, but you had conversations with DOT. But I remember that we were going to do it in concrete, and it came, it boiled down that we didn't have enough money. We didn't want to put that extra, I think it was another half a million dollars on top of, is what I remember. And then Travis came in, and then I felt, as we were moving forward with him, that it was approved, you could go back as a repair.
Well, what happened was originally, there was 1.2 million or so dollars given.
Right.
And we spent the money designing concrete.
Right. But it'd go back as a repair, and that wood was okay. So I'd be surprised. So I think with Commissioner Rawls, I think we need to have that conversation with them about that as a repair and going back to wood. And yes, it's, I think it's the oldest operating.
The oldest?
I think it's, it's in, it's one or two in, in the state of Florida. So it does have some historical significance. So that's all I got.
Mr. Turner?
Okay. You know, I, I know that for the ones of us that were here and actually remember what took place, we had a grant from DOT. And we had to put 51,000, or maybe it was 80,000, pick a number, I don't remember exactly, but it wasn't 500. But it was, most of the money was coming from a grant.
Right.
And we had to make the decision to either go with Travis Roberts and let him repair the landings and go that route for 50 to 60, of which we agreed to pay, I think it was 50, of which we agreed to pay another five grand on top of that for engineering, which I understand now we have a bill for 13 grand, when it was made specifically apparent that we were only going to pay for five grand. So we haven't paid it, but I understand that this engineering firm came back. And so now, if we pay it, we are violating procedures or whatever. So I'm just telling you that, you know, I had a bad feeling when we did this. I did, a bad feeling, that this was not the way to go. But we all decided to do it, and I'm taking blame for it, or right along with every other body that voted to do it on here. I'm not trying to pass the blame. But we voted to, to let Mr. Roberts go his route and that we would do it. At that time, he thought he could do it 35, 40,000. Then he came back, needed some engineering. We agreed to put in five. It turned out it was more than that. Still isn't done. And now it comes to the point to where he's saying, we're going to bid it out. That wasn't the deal we made with Travis. The deal we made with him was, is he was going to take it. He had people that were going to go do it. He had people that were going to oversee it. They were going to all be licensed. I mean, I know it wasn't on television that day, because it was in the other boardroom over there, but this is what he said. And so now evidently, it's turned back over to the county. We're talking about bidding it out to somebody to go and do the repairs. And, and we're getting the engineering bills up and be on whatever, anything that we said we would stand good for. Guys, this thing has gone from sugar to slop. I'm just telling you right now, this is one of those projects that has not gotten better. It has gotten worse. And, and I don't see any end in sight to it either unless somebody comes in and brings it back in. And if we've got to come in, we be in the county and set this back straight again, and we've got to write a check for more than 50,000, which is what we agreed to go get this done on because of assurances given us by Mr. Roberts, then, then, then I'm going to be very upset, because we could have had a brand-new concrete landing on both sides for 50, 60 grand if we'd have just, and used the DOT money that we sent back. So I'm just telling you, the, this, this thing is getting to be like a bad piece of candy. The longer you chew on it, the nastier it gets, and that's where we're getting here. So I don't know why we're bidding anything else, anything out here, Mike, because I don't think we were supposed to bid anything out.
I did not know that, but.
No, sir. I don't think so. I know that he'd probably like to turn it back over to us at this point. But I, but, you know, I, I think it's a whole new deal. And I don't know if I was even supposed to talk about the engineer, because Julianne wouldn't pay it, I don't think, but.
She ain't paying it. She's not going to pay.
Well, I'm just telling you, you know, she shouldn't. I mean, we agreed to five grand. And there was an absolute conversation before the lady started. If you can't do it five grand, don't, don't sharpen your pencil. You know, and so she goes and does part of the work, or whatever, and sends bills 13 grand. I'm sorry, that don't work that way.
That's right.
So anyhow, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that this whole thing's gotten, gotten way out of hand. Mike, you're not supposed to be doing anything here other than anything you could do to, to aid Mr. Roberts and his group. Now, if he's trying to make an exit strategy, then he needs to be man enough to walk in that door right there and say, look, I can't get it done. I thought I could. I can't get it done. He needs to be man, he started this. He needs to be man enough in here to come in here and stop it. But I don't know that that won't kill the whole thing, because we already sent back the DOT money. We don't have a barge that's operating. I don't know that they have the one that they're, that the, Mr. Hackett owns. I don't know that it's even seaworthy. So I don't know where this will go at that point. But if he has stopped working on it, or can't work on it, or is determined he can't get there, he needs to come in here and tell us.
I agree. Mr. Rawls, you have the floor?
I think, Miss Young.
Wait a minute, wait, wait. Mr. Rawls, if you don't mind. Julianne, would you like to say something?
I'm sorry, Commissioner. Yes, just one point of, a little bit of clarity. My understanding from the workshop way back when, Mr. Roberts is supposed to be putting the entire package together, including the scope and the specifications. And then we're going to overlay that into our template so that we make sure we have all of our legal clauses. But as far as the groundwork, it's all supposed to be done by Mr. Roberts. And then we will overlay it, though, into the county's bid template. So the actual bid will come from General Services, but be produced by Mr. Roberts, just for clarity of anybody who may not have been with us for that workshop.
Mr. Rawls, you have the floor?
I, I too was at the workshop. And what we were looking at at the time, there was a proposal made for $90,000 to design the repair of the existing using wood. The concrete ship had already sailed. The engineering was done. There was a quarter of a million dollars spent on concrete design under a DOT grant. The rest of that money was given back to DOT because we couldn't do the concrete. They were going to take the money that was left over from paving the Fort Gates Ferry Road, or whatever, going in, which was about $400,000. We were going to have to put anywhere from 60 to 90,000 in. And that's when Travis came with the, with the proposal. As far as the 13,000 in engineering, I think you're absolutely correct. My understanding was there was an agreement made. I thought we had a proposal from the engineer, and it was approved by the commission. Is that not correct?
That is correct, sir.
So I don't know how they, you know, made an $8,000 mistake. Maybe they need to go back to basic math school. But that's easy to point out to them when you send them a check for $5,000 with a copy of their original proposal. Unless somebody authorized additional work to be done, then there's, you know, they're, all they're supposed to do is load calculations. If, if their load calculations were wrong and DOT rejected them, my understanding is, is that what they submitted, the day they submitted was not in the proper format, correct?
They, they had to resubmit them, I think, the fourth time, they finally got it right.
So that, that, that doesn't create extra work on our part. They just didn't do their job the first time around. So this is what I'm willing to do, if, if you guys don't mind. If you'll get Army Corps on the phone, we'll have a, a three-way call. I'll get Mr. Roberts and tell him, he needs to tee up, get in the batter's box and get ready to go. But the first thing we have to do is make sure that Army Corps of Engineers has an understanding of what we're doing, because I, I got the feeling it sounds like they think that we're putting in something new. This thing's been rebuilt two or three times in its history since it was originally built. I think most recently, they said the 1980s or so, when it was affected by a storm. But, you know, we're not, we're not.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any, I don't have any problem at all with Mr., with Commissioner Rawls getting involved in contacting Mr. Roberts and just finding out where he is in the process, you know, or whatever. But, you know, if it's, if it's dead, it's dead. Let's go ahead and bury it. If it ain't dead, then let's do what we can do.
I was on, I was on a phone call the other day. Did you, either Mike called me or Robert, Travis Roberts called me. Somebody called me and said, we're on the phone, and it was Mike and him. And I was very frustrated. I expressed my frustration, you know, because here we are kicking this can down the road again. And I, I can't, what was the topic?
We're not kicking the can.
No, 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 no. This is what, what I got the conversation, and I just, oh, I know what it was. They said, they asked me if I had a copy of the original drawings. I'm like, are you kidding me? As many copies were handed out, and no, I don't have a copy of it, but I know the county has them. And so apparently, the, the plans were discovered, and they were able to be sent off, because they had to be sent to the Army Corps of Engineers. But so we're, as far as I know, the project's moving along. I had, I've never heard that anybody say that it was dead in the water, or Roberts is trying to pull back and say it can't be done.
This Commissioner would rather not a three-way phone call with Zoom technology we have now. We can record that Zoom meeting, so we can have it for, for our public record. And I think we need to do that more often. So.
Either way.
Yeah, let's, let's set that up with the Corps of Engineers and get Travis in. Let's get everybody on the party that wants to be on there, record the meeting, then we'll have it for our, for our document.
I, I would honestly say at this point, Mr. Roberts doesn't need to be involved in that, because what we're trying to do is modify a permit. Apparently, the county had a permit issued to build the concrete structure.
Right.
So maybe, maybe they say, no deal. What we gave you a permit on is not what's being built. You got to start from scratch and get a new permit issued. But we have to have the conversation somehow.
Correct. And that's, that's what, exactly what I said in my letter, said it is, you know, it's not a new one. It's just a reconstruction of the old, of the old landing that was there. It's exactly what my letter said. And then when they came back, said, I need a copy of the drawing. So I sent them a copy of the, the stamped drawing of that.
Let's get a Zoom meeting. Mr. Turner?
I think we need to do something to see where we really are on this. We've jerked this thing around for so long that it, it's almost incompetent, the, from all different directions. I'll take some of it, too. I'm just telling you. I'm not pointing fingers. I'm just telling you, it's crazy that we've gone to this route and it not happened. I mean, at this point, somebody just needs to find out, you know, you made the comment that you're not sure that Mr. Roberts needs to be involved. Mr. Roberts is involved.
No, no, in, in the, in the Army Corps.
I under, okay, that's fine.
Because that, that permit has nothing to do with that.
I get it. I don't want to get into conflict with you. I'm just trying to say that Mr. Roberts is involved here. And if he's not involved, then he needs to come in and says, I thought I could do it, but I can't. I'm done. And then we'll have the conversation. Do we shoot the horse? Do we try to feed it back up and revive it? Do we, do what do we do from this point on? But it's going to make a lot of difference if the county's got to come up with 200,000 or 300,000 to make this deal work instead of the 50 that was original.
We're in the same place we were before. We just need to get the Army Corps of Engineer permit thing resolved, and then we're out of the gate at that point.
Okay. Let's get that meeting. Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, I agree with that. I think we need to sit down exactly where, where we are, what has to happen. I remember all of that, because I was involved in it. I sure thought that the difference between going forward with the concrete was much larger than, than $80,000.
Well, concrete was off the table at that point. It was wood when we had the $40,000 conversation.
Well, I know that, I know that there was a point where Mike Nimitz kept saying, hey, we're about to run out of time with the concrete, with, with, with the DOT money. And I thought it was a, a lot more than that, and that's why we went the other way. So, but yeah, it, it's, it's time. It's drug on too long. it's time, it's drug on too long, and I would like to be on that, on that call, please.
Yes.
On that Zoom meeting.
I agree with that. Mr. Adams, that?
So, I mean, I'm surprised we're having this conversation like this now, because I thought we were going to put this on a transportation workshop with Mr. Roberts. I mean, that's what was discussed back in January, I asked for that, and we had agreement that they were going to follow up with Mr. Roberts to get him here, so I don't understand why we're circumventing that, when that was something we already discussed, and I thought that, I didn't follow up on it, because I thought we agreed that that was going to be in the next transportation workshop.
You know what, it'll be at the next transportation workshop, and we'll, we'll have this Corps of Engineer thing settled by that time.
Right. My expectation is that Mr. Roberts comes to that, I mean, and then if he doesn't, then I agree with Mr. Turner, that if you don't show, you don't show. I mean, I'm like that about everything. If you, if you can't show up to support what you believe in, it's on you.
Well, he didn't know it was going to be on there in defense of him today, so...
That's what I'm saying, I'd like to make sure that it's on the next transportation workshop, because that's what was asked for.
Mr. Rawls?
Just, just for clarity, as far as I know, neither Mike Troxel nor Travis Roberts has indicated to me, and I've been keeping track of this project, that there's anything stopping it from going forward. Unless you guys are aware of something I'm not aware of, the only thing that I was told was that DOT, and I talked to Roger Lou, I talked to the young lady, I can't think her name.
Melissa Morgan?
Melissa Morgan. I understood the process, and once Mr. Lou was satisfied, my assumption, at the risk of assuming, was that we were going to move forward. I did not realize that the Army Corps permit had not been modified from our conversation in 2019. So I'm, the only thing that I'm concerned about right now is that Army Corps may be a sticky wicket. If they say, no, we'll modify the permit, you guys are good to go, my understanding is, is Travis, Travis is ready to move this thing forward, and the, you mentioned the barge, or the boat, one of the two. He told me that they had had the motor rebuilt or replaced, there's a diesel motor that had to be redone, that's been done, so I believe they're ready to rock and roll.
Okay, why don't we just stay on topic on this one real quick? I think a Zoom meeting, number one, I think Sarah needs to advertise that more than one commissioner will be on that call.
Okay.
Because Commissioner Pickens also wants to be on it, and staff can make that happen, so, and let's, let's cross that hurdle with the Corps of Engineers first, and, and record that Zoom, and then at the next transportation meeting, Travis will be here, we should have an answer from the Corps at that time, and we also need to get a, just what Commissioner Rawls was saying, what about the barge, and what about the boat? Because it's time, it, you know, it is time to bring that plane in for a landing, big time, or jump out and let the plane ran into the river and be done with it, because, I mean, to be honest with you, I'm just going to say this, and it probably, I've had one call in the past few years, wanting to know why the ferry's not running. One, I want the ferry to run, I think it's a cool thing, but it's not the most pressing issue in Putnam County right now. So it is an issue, it's not the most pressing issue.
Correct.
So are we all in agreement with that?
Yeah.
The way we're going? Okay, Mr. Adams, that, last, last comment.
Yeah, so my comment, actually, since we're standing here and sitting here, I'd like to talk about the 310 bridge at that same transportation workshop, because I have a little bit of concerns there. We're still having issues when there's any type of rain, where Deep Creek, this last, I think it was Wednesday, or whatever, last time we had that big rain.
Four inches and 45 minutes.
Well, if you go there now, when it's been dry, the water's only about 18 inches below the bottom of the, top of the road, and when you go there, when it rains, it's basically even with the road. And I don't know how smart it is to just repair in place. I'm, I'll defer to people who are experts about roads, but I'm not. If the water's at the road level on a regular basis, just, it seems counterintuitive, if we're going to put a ton of money into it, to not raise that somehow. And I don't know what that costs, but I wasn't here when we decided, what are we going to do with 310 bridge?
All we got to do is open the dam and water go back down again.
And maybe that's an option, let's...
And it is an option, and they try to do that, they do. We can do that, too, we're at 30% completion on 310 Bridge, from what I heard this morning.
Yes.
Let's put that on the agenda for the next meeting, too, and, and have that discussion.
And I guess I'd like to, how do we do that, to get them to lower the level of road? I mean, that's, that's what we're...
It's very simple. I can make a phone call, but they monitor that every day, they do. So, and when they see the heavy rains coming, they actually start putting water out. But there's a delicate balance, so, it's, because there's people downstream.
No, I understand.
And it causes scouring.
Ninety percent of the time, it's, under our bridge, the water's right close to the top of the bridge.
And they watch that, they do, I promise you that. There's a...
Maybe we need to have them adjust the, the level on the bridge that it needs to be at, and I don't know professionally, how, how far below a bridge bottom should water be?
It should be, on a normal basis, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be to the bottom now. You see them quite often, that when high water, it'll get right up the top, but as long as it's not hitting the girders, that would provide that, 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 that force?
They can lower the dam, they can open the dam a little bit, let more water out, and they can drop it. But we don't have the authority to make that happen, other than Larry Harvey requested that we like for the water to be a little lower in the...
He's the lake lord, and he could do that.
No, I don't, but they do monitor that, and they, they're willing to, but unfortunately, and Mr. Adams, that, if I may, they, here lately, when we've seen, and we all grew up here, most of us, two o'clock on a, on a summer day, you were ready for the rain to come. You knew it was coming, that's what was going to happen. Any more four inches and 45 minutes like we had the other day, you can't control that. And all that water from Antalacan and from Alachua County is all trying to go to Rodman. Those Corps of Engineers knew where to put that dam at, and they put it right where it was supposed to be at. And it's, but we got, they got problems, and they know that, that water's competing, plus not counting all the people who manipulated the creeks and the dams and what have you. I mean, they've all done it out there, so we can keep an eye on it. All right, let's move forward.
I want to say one more thing, real quick, to Commissioner Adams' advantage here, the problem with the 310 bridge isn't the high water, it's the scouring that occurs as the water's going under it. So as they draw down, that scours, that's what we're going to, that's what we're repairing, so the, I don't think the high water is really that much of an issue, unless it does top the road, obviously, then we have an issue.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Troxel, for bringing that to our attention, we appreciate it. Any public comments on miscellaneous items from the public? All right, seeing no public comments on miscellaneous items. Commissioner requests, Mr. Adams, that?
I'm all set.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
I'd like to appoint Jimmy Simons to the Parks and Rec Board, subject to her turn, and then an application. Can you get with her, please, sir, and make sure she knows how to do all that, I'd appreciate it. If you need her contact, I'm pretty sure I have it, yeah, okay.
And that was shameless, Mr.?
No, sir, that was the way you get something done.
Actually, I think that was pretty efficient.
The way you get something done. Other than that, I'm done, sir.
Okay, Mr. Rawls, any comments or requests?
I just, you know, if, if there's anything we can do to look at the greater Boswick area on drainage issues, starting to get a few of those phone calls here and there, and rainy season hasn't even started.
I know. Okay, Mr. Pickens?
Thank you, Chairman Harvey, I'm going to say that Commissioner Turner is pretty smooth, sometimes. He caught Ms. Simons in a weak moment there, and, and I think she'll be a great addition to the Parks and Rec Advisor Free Board.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman of the Parks and Rec.
I just have one comment. I believe we have the second town hall meeting Monday, six in Willaca. Travis set that up, is he running it? Who's running it? Am I running it, or are you going to run it?
No, we're...
Did it, do I need to contact the town of Willaca to see if they have microphones out there, because I guess we're having it outside?
He brings the speakers and a microphone, actually had two or three microphones last time, but it's, it's just kind of a free, free thinking, you know, we just, we opened up last time with an invocation and a pledge, and just started taking questions from the audience. It was very...
Okay, no particular agenda, just in question answers?
Yeah.
Do you have a time limit?
What, what we talked about at the beginning was basically what we're, our, our annual, our, the, the list that we had come up with, there was no formal list handed out, but we just told the, you know, the folks, here's, here's what we're looking at coming up, we're going to be discussing this, setting an agenda that will, will lay out priorities, so we're talking about that, getting input from the public on those priorities. But there's really no, it's just a free, free thinking conversation with the public.
Okay, any time limit? It's 6:00 PM, right?
Yeah, I think we were done by, what, 7:30, 7 o'clock?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty? Well, we didn't start until 6:30, that's right, that's right. We, and in all honesty, we probably could have wrapped up a half, half hour earlier, but we just stuck around and talked to folks.
Where are the minutes from that meeting? I haven't seen them yet.
Angie has them, yeah, Angie has them.
Who's Angie?
What's her last name? Travis's girlfriend, what is?
Well, okay.
What is it?
Is this a county meeting, or is this a?
All right, I think we, we really do, let me say this, I have a couple of comments. I think it's Commissioner Pickens' district, you should lead it off. Number two, if we don't have formal minutes, we need formal minutes at these meetings. And if Angie has them, or she has that video, because they did video it, turn that into the county, so we can at least be transparent.
Who does she need to send that to?
And put it on, I'm sorry?
Who does she send it to?
She can send it to anybody here, send it to Jacob. We, we can put it on our county website, but we, I want those meetings transparent, I really do. And I, and I think we'll have that talk come up there in March. Mr. Pickens, you still have the floor, sir, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say, so, anyway, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I think somebody does need to take minutes, that all needs to be turned in. I'd prefer, I think we go to, in April, we go to Melrose, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so any more down in my district, I'd like to know, because I'd like to maybe ask some, some staff to come, and then, and then have, have some type of an agenda. So I will secure the Crescent City Women's Club, they've agreed to host one, so I'll try to get that one in May.
Okay.
And then we haven't talked any further, correct?
I would like for us not to talk any further till we have our Commissioner priority meeting. I think we're going to be able to come out of there with some good ideas, but, but we'll, we'll stay with the March one, I'm good with that.
What this is about, you know, I sense some anxiety. I'm going to go out, and I'm going to talk to the public. I'm going to talk to the public the first Monday of every month somewhere in the county.
But we all do.
If y'all want to come along for the ride, that's fine, if not, I understand. The whole intent of saying there may be one, more than one commissioner there is, if there's more than one commissioner available, I, I don't, I would prefer not to be the Lone Ranger. If you guys can come out, it would, it would be really appreciated, but I...
Well, definitely.
I made it very clear when I got elected, I want to communicate with the public, I want to talk with the public. The last group of people that I want to run this county is our staff. We've got to hear from the people that hire us and that pay us, and that's the folks that should be sitting out there, or if we take our, our game to their, their backyard, make it easier on them. And it seemed to be very well-received in Barden, I don't think it'll be bad in Willaca. It's not a, I mean, the, the one thing that came out of the meeting in Barden that really threw me for a loop, and it was brought up by Ed Killebrew, was the substance abuse and mental illness component of what we're having, having to do with in Putnam County. And that's got a whole conversation going that you guys don't know about, on, you know, there's an undercurrent right now, a lot of folks that want to get involved in this and want to talk about it. So this is the whole, whole issue, or whole purpose of it. If you're not available, it's not a terrible thing, and I'm, nobody's going to say, oh my gosh, Commissioner Pickens wasn't going to make it in his own backyard, it's not that kind of thing, but if you're available, it's, you know, it'd be fun to have.
It is touted as a town hall meeting, but for right now, because I can go out and have lunch with Larry and every community around, and I've done that before, but out of respect, we're a team, and if we're going to take a town hall meeting on the road, it needs to be a team out there. That's all I'm saying about that, and I think we, we, there's a respect that was shown, it was shown to me the other night when I was there as chairman, and I appreciate that, but we need those minutes here, and we, we, we need that, or the film, or the, we just need to be transparent. Mr. Pickens, you still have the floor, sir?
I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, and I have, I just, I want to answer a comment that was made to Mr. Troxel on the purchase of those properties. Mr. Troxel? Well, I have the floor on those properties across, the reason, Mr. Rawls, you mentioned, and I kind of stayed, stayed quiet there, but if you remember from years ago, the backsides of those ditches were never put in.
Right.
This is going to protect, Mr. Troxel can actually take that spider in there and make that backside of the ditch to keep the water one more level away from getting so close to the road. So that's the purpose. We were out there the other day, watching water run down our new road and diving, where it should have been diving way down at different spots. So that's all I'm going to say about that, and I appreciate, I appreciate the board's understanding. It's a great move, and we do want to get rid of those, those water lots to the east, where there's a retention pond. We can sell that to those neighbors, and I'm sure they're going to buy it. So that's the end of my comments, so thank you. County